Good evening. Welcome. At this time, we're going to have an imocation and that'll be done by Chris Newkirk, one of our fine employees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's pray. Lord, we come to you tonight and just ask for your presence and your guidance in our life, Lord. We are just so many people in this room, in our communities, in our state, nation, and world that are just in a state of chaos. And, Lord, just remind us now that you're the God of creation and that there is nothing that is outside of your reach. So often, we forget that, Lord. We fall into this mindset that because we can't see you physically in our presence, that you're not there and that you're not intervening on our behalf, Lord. And I just ask now that you remind us of that, that you place that hope in our heart, Lord, that you're a God who doesn't forsake us, no matter what challenges or obstacles we may face. Lord, you're a God who patiently waits for us to prayer to you for a response. And I just ask that you turn all hearts and minds to you now. Lord, we just thank you for being a God who extends grace and love and mercy and for doing that for broken people and for using broken people to do your work, Lord. And I just ask that you place that reminder in our hearts. As we move forward in the business of this meeting tonight, Lord, and for the actions that are going to take place in this room, I just ask that you give us a tent of ears or that you allow us to listen openly to others. Lord, that you allow us to take action and make decisions that are pleasing to you, Lord. Lord, that all the honor and glory of those decisions be given to you where it rightfully belongs. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chris. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask that you stand for the pledge and it'll be led by Commissioner Booth.
I pledge the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item is disclosure of any conflict of interest. Is there any conflict of interest any of the commissioners have? Any of the agenda items hearing none? We'll move to item number D, the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor of tonight's agenda, please raise your right hand. Thank you. At this time, we have our presentation. The first one is the Service Award Presentation by our Human Resource, Dolores.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We have two Beaufort County employees here tonight to receive their service awards. We have Susan Hudson from the Department of Social Services with 20 years of service. Next, we have Victoria Van Norwick with 10 years of service with our Communications We also have some additional employees I'd like to acknowledge that are not here tonight. Jacqueline Jackson with five years with the jail. Michael Wetherington, five years with Emergency Medical Services. Christian Cannon with five years with Emergency Medical Services. And Chad Bullock, who also has five years with Emergency Medical Services.
Thank you. Next item is the Schedule of Values Presentation by our Tax Assessor, Lloyd. It looks like you've got some help.
Good evening.
Good evening.
With me tonight is actually Ryan Vincent of Visiting Valuations. Mr. Vincent actually runs the company, owns the company that's doing the revaluation itself that we've been working with, that the county granted the contract with to do the revaluation. He'll be here for, when I give a short presentation, if y'all have any questions, anything I wouldn't be able to answer, that's what he's going to be here for. So we'll be available for that. Briefly, so Beaufort County Schedule of Values Presentation to the Board, of course, just a few things. We did go over some of this last month, but you can't go over this too much. I want the public to understand this the best they can. I want them to understand we're not doing this because it's a fun Tuesday, Monday, whatever, you know, we're doing it because it is a requirement. Reappraisal is a process in which, of course, a real property, key, real property, in the county is appraised at its current market value as of particular date. Real property includes both the land and the improvements on it, whether residential, commercial, agricultural, industrial. State law, why we reappraise property, state law requires all counties to conduct a reappraisal at least once every eight years. As you gentlemen know, we've moved to a seven year, it's seven years since the last one. We're moving to a six, and I think that's a good pattern to hold until we take a look and see what's going on after that. Reappraisal distributes the overall property tax burden equitably across the county based on current market values. What is the market value? Over time, most properties change in value, but often at different rates, depending on location. What may be an inland property in Aurora may not, you know, change as much as a waterfront in Washington is going.
Is there supposed to be a slideshow going?
I thought I sent it in, but it's possible I did not.
It's in the book.
Okay, it's in the book.
It's in the book. I just meant for the public.
No, sir, although I can always put a copy of this on there, as far as that goes. And we'll talk about the most important part, which will be online. So what is the market value? Over time, again, the value change. We do not create the market value. The Tax Office, we analyze market sales. Market value is set by choices of buyers and sellers in the marketplace. One thing really important about that, that I cannot drill home enough, I get this question, I've had it twice this week. People say, well, what sales are you looking at when it comes to my home? We're looking at sales of like properties. You want me to look at sales of like properties? The best thing to do is to look at similar homes or similar businesses or similar. What does similar mean? Similar age, perhaps, or construction, if we can, similar sizes to some degree within a range, similar style stylistically, but certainly within a given neighborhood. We try to stay within a reasonable geographic area, if possible, to look at sales. So we don't go looking, again, back to Aurora, we don't look in Moss Landing for sales to use for Aurora comps. I mean, it's not the way it's done, it's not the way it should be done. So again, of like properties, as far as the sales, we plan to have the reappraisal notices mailed out to all property owners in late January or early February of '25. What are we presenting tonight? Tonight, we are presenting the Schedule of Values for North Carolina General Statute 105-317, the Schedule of Values for Market Value and for Present Use Value, I'll hit that in a second, to the Board of Commissioners for consideration and make them available for public inspection. The Schedule of Values documents the guidelines, methods, procedures used by the assessor to value real property at market value or present use value as appropriate. These Schedules of Values will become effective January 1st, 2025, and will remain in effect until the county's next reappraisal. The current Schedule of Values was from January 1st, 2018. We're still valuing, as of this year, property based on that schedule. We are requesting that the Board of County Commissioners schedule a public hearing on the Schedule of Values for October 23rd, 2024. I do believe I have that information in. We're kind of statutorily held to a really tight line on the dates before what we have tonight and then what you would have to adopt the schedule. That's why the 23rd kind of came out. As far as that goes, the next step would be that schedule, would be the public hear, sorry, the next step on the schedule, sorry, would be the public hearing on the 23rd. After that, it would be November 4th, the board hearing to adopt the Schedule of Values. In December and January, we're going to be doing public reappraisal presentations right on. I've done a few lately, done a few with Rotary, done stuff with Chamber of Commerce, continue to do some, still encourage anybody who wants us to speak on revaluation, please reach out. We'd love to keep doing that. January 1st will be the effective date of the reappraisal, which means that's the date in which our values are based. And then, of course, in late January or early February, we'll be sending the notices. One thing to dial back to is the mention of present use value. What is required and what we're doing is the state actually has a schedule of what the present use value, what we should be valuing for our land and et cetera. We also put that in place in the revale. So while that could be a small change, it's not a significant change to most property. It's the state required values that we place with those. So they will be changing somewhat. That said, you know, a large farm would not see the kind of change that they would without present use value applied. It would be a change, but a small one. So that value will also be, that schedule will also be up for consideration on that. We have made a copy of the schedule, we've made two. The copy of the schedule, first off, there's a paper copy in the manager's office or the administration office, I should say. There's also one in my office, and we also have one available online. Welcome to the new era. We have one online as well, a PDF copy. It is actually on, if you go to the assessor's office and you follow our links, it's under the reappraisal on there as well. Any questions, of course, I should be able to answer it, we should be able to dive into it. But mostly, this is a lot of, not to say boilerplate, but broad and then again, exact items. This is how many years of depreciation do you apply to X? How much base rate do you apply to Y? It ends up being a lot of jargon in it. It's hard to do it any other way because a lot of it is saying that. We did try to make it as simplistic as possible, but it still comes in at a hefty 300 and some odd pages, especially with the agricultural stuff and everything else in it. Now, that said, in my last county, I think we topped the scales over 600 pages, so 300 and something isn't too crazy, but it's where we're going to be at with the schedule. That's it for me.
Any questions of Lloyd? Do we need to approve the date, Katie or Brian?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to approve this October 23rd public hearing?
You have to have a motion to have the meeting.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Hood, you want to make that?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we lead October 23rd public.
Okay. And we have a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
I believe that'll be 5:30 in this room, Katie, is what we discussed.
5:30.
Of course, it needs to be a quorum of you gentlemen present.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I'm sorry, does anyone have a question of Lloyd?
I'm beating y'all to death with this info, but that's the way I like it. So we all know and we're all good and it's all out there and the public knows it, too. I will add one more thing. We also need a Board of Equalization Review Date. I'm sorry for that not being on here, but just real quick, I wanted to say we actually need a fall date. I don't believe we had one for the Board of Equalization Review where you gentlemen meet to hear those values. I had a couple of dates really quick, if you don't mind. So the best dates I feel would be November 18th with a fallback of the 19th, but we could also have done October 29th if so desired, which is why I'm talking to y'all tonight about it. But I would suggest the 18th or the 19th, 18th should be enough, November for a Board of Equalization Review Date.
Any preference from the Board?
What is the 18th?
That's a Monday, that's a Monday.
Monday? We meet on October 18th.
We've been October 29th.
Excuse me, November 18th.
That's what I meant.
Both of them wrong.
I probably said it's on me. So, November, thank you.
November 18th, which is the day.
Do we need two nights?
I always say two nights, and the reason I do two nights is in case the Board wants to move something to the second night for consideration or inspection, it doesn't normally happen. But that's why I usually ask y'all to do 18th and 19th. But that said, we've been pretty lucky, knock on wood, to keep it one night.
I made my motion to include the 19th.
Okay.
Just a minute. Katie, do you remember when we had the Legislative Conference in Raleigh? I think it's going to be pretty close to that.
It's any close, I think. It's in the first part of the month.
Okay. What date?
Now, we have the Legislative Golds somewhere around that date. I think you're right.
Yeah.
I have failed to put it on my calendar, but I think it's November the 18th.
I think it's midweek.
November 14th and 15th.
Okay.
They were cool.
So that's previous week. All right. Someone make a motion?
I made a motion.
Okay.
I respect.
I'll second that. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. You got anything else, Lloyd?
I do not believe I do, and I believe we're good.
Okay.
We're ready to make a motion.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We're down to the Public Comments section, and the first one is, before we start, I want to make sure that you understand it's a three-minute limit on the time, and this is not a period where you ask questions of the commissioner and we have dialogue back and forth. It's your chance to say what you think is wrong with government in Beaufort County. So when you ask a question, you look at us like, well, why aren't they answering it? That's why. So with the whistle blow at the end of three minutes, and the first one is Carla.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm reaching out to you guys today basically to kind of let you know what it was like from a parent's standpoint. We were not notified that our children were in danger. We have the emails from the school. The first email we received at 14 basically told us, hey, monitor your kids' social media. We knew nothing that our children were even in potential danger. I have gone through and I have looked and I have looked and I have talked to people and I have reached out. I've talked to the superintendent, I've talked to some of the officers that were there, I have talked to teachers, I have talked to admin to find out exactly what happened and where the communication valve was. We were not notified. So imagine our surprise, 8:30, 9 o'clock at night, we see a Facebook post telling us, hey, your child's school was in threat of being shot up by another student there. Our kids are there. My child is there. I don't know about y'all, but I would move heaven and earth for my children. That is not a feeling that I want to ever have again. Something needs to be done. The communication lacked. I've talked to the superintendent, I got his timeline. They knew about this around 7:20 that morning before school went in, but yet they were reassured that the threat was not credible at that time. They could have stopped school, they could have held school, but it wasn't. It took until around 1:00 when someone finally showed up at P.S. Jones. 1:00. That's like five hours that something could have happened with that student on grounds. And then I come to find out that this threat had apparently been out there since August. That's even worse. Yeah. It puts it in another whole perspective. My child said, Mom, am I safe to go to school? I said, hon, I can't tell you not to go to school, but I can't tell you to go to school. If you don't feel safe, we've got to do something to make you feel safe. So what I'm asking is the next time contracts come up, seriously take a look at what we're doing to our children. First, we invited them to bring this amnesty box into the school where they're saying, oh, let's put weapons in it. What if this child had brought a weapon into that school and then decided not to turn that weapon in? Can you imagine what would have happened? What if that weapon had gone off by accident? Because children are not always taught the proper way to handle a weapon. Imagine that. Beaufort County would be on the map for something detrimental, devastating, and the parents here would no longer feel safe to support the county schools. They would no longer feel safe to live in this county if their kids had to go to school because we continue to fail. It is not something that is easy to stand here. And yes, I have gone over this and I have talked to many people trying to get to the bottom of it because of the communication lacking. But as you can see, what we got is completely different than what was put out on a Facebook post. And that is how parents found out that our kid's school had been threatened to be shot up by another student and that student was on school grounds. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Never in my wildest dreams did I think that nine months after the original happening, I would still be coming here. I thought it would be resolved before now. I did not bring a handout again tonight because of the repercussions that happened on the last one that I gave out, where the children were mistreated due to that handout. On January the 26th, the children were removed from their mother 1:00 in the morning, which made it the 27th, actually, and it was on a truancy issue. That truancy issue was overturned by the Board of Education, so it's no longer for that reason. The children came to stay with me on the 14th of February. On the 22nd of May, they were removed from my home. At that time, it was stated that there, according to the court documents, the papers that DSS submitted, it stated that other family members were ready to take these children in. That has not happened. Since that time, the 14 and the 15-year-old have been housed three different home placements. Jaden has been IBC'd six times. The last time, September the 5th, he was in the hospital for two weeks and DSS did not go up there, according to Beaufort Hospital. They actually had someone that sits with the elderly come in and sit with Jaden. After I showed up for a two-hour visit on September the 5th, they came up with a plan. As I was asked to leave after two hours, they said that he was not allowed any visitors from his family. That was not in the, on his chart. That's how I was able to go in and talk. So after that visit with Jaden, the next thing that happened, we had the, September the 26th, we had a DSS meeting. At that time, a lot of things was exposed. I really don't want to air dirty laundry, but I have no choice. Under DSS's custody, my 15-year-old grandson is now going to be a father. This is most alarming. DSS knew about this. When he was transported three hours away, it was in full discussion in the travel. This is extremely distressing. Now, he's been moved again, yet again, on September 26th, the morning after his mother was awarded by the court to be able to go visit him. He was removed that morning, six hours away, to South Carolina. Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Hi. That's my grandmother. Hi, you guys at home. These are my children. This is Jaden that she's talking about, the one who's 15-year-old, years old and about to be a father because of negligence of Beaufort County Department of Social Services. I'm here tonight just to warn you guys at home, this can happen to any of you. This board has been told time and time again what's been going on, what they've funded, what they've allowed. And now, I'm 35 and about to be a grandmother. My daughter Genesis, she was given to my abuser. CPS case has now been opened against him because he let her hand get badly burned. She's seven. And I'm just wondering, I know you guys can't respond because legal advice and all, but how much more is going to be allowed to continue? Those of you at home, we really, really need change. We really need new people in these seats who actually care about the well-being of our children. You are a misunderstanding, a divorce, a truancy report away from this being your children, and that's not okay. There are funds missing, there are children missing, there are children that have died in DSS custody. It's not okay. It's not, it shouldn't be allowed. It just shouldn't. My son was a virgin when he went into DSS custody, and now he can be a father, and that's just been swept under the rug. My son, without the 10-day hearing, got shipped off to South Carolina without my permission. I had to sign a permission slip for my daughter to get her haircut, but I didn't have to sign a permission slip for my son to be taken across state lines and placed into a secure facility where he's not allowed to talk to anybody still because he's being isolated because DSS doesn't want anyone to know what's going on. So those of you at home, please, when it's time to vote, keep these things in mind. I know Mr. Richardson, Mr. Langley, Mr. Walker, Mr. Rebales, they're up for reelection. And we just need change, you guys. Also, Mr. Langley, I heard that you're a pastor, and I was very, very disappointed that you are not on the front lines advocating for all these children, giving your position. I feel like all of you should be ashamed of yourselves. And that's all I have to say. You guys have the day you deserve.
Thank you.
Good evening. I had originally come in to talk about government waste. It abounds in our county, state, and our federal government. But hearing so much of what's been discussed tonight, I'm kind of confused about what I need to talk about. I guess one of the first things that I want to talk about is the roundabout. The citizens of Beaufort County are calling it the rounding round. Maybe we should just call it the circle back. How much is this costing? What study was done? And did the county commissioners vote for it? We've got a roundabout that probably could have been fixed with a flashing yellow light and a flashing red light. We've got two miles of medians where you can't make a left turn or a right turn in a turn lane. That makes a lot of sense. Coming out of the road between the food line and the cemetery, you can't turn left. Well, the other day, I saw a citizen cross the median in order to make a left-hand turn. I thought, good for him. Okay. So I guess that's my first complaint about the government. Did the county commissioners look at this proposal and did they approve of it? The next issue to talk about, western North Carolina is devastated. If you've been there, if you've talked to anyone, if you've seen the pictures, those people do not have flood insurance. They've been offered $750. $750 won't buy three weeks worth of food. We could talk about the billions of dollars that have spent on housing, feeding, clothing, and credit cards for illegals. This is our money. This is not government money. This money belongs to we, the people. I'm asking the Beaufort County Commissioners to join with the other 99 counties, contact our federal U.S. senators and representatives stating that we want money allocated to rebuild North Carolina. I'm asking everyone to contact their senators, their representatives, and demand that this money be spent on North Carolina, Georgia, Alabama, Florida. money be spent on North Carolina, Georgia, Alabama, Florida, all states, counties that have been affected by Hurricane Helene. This is our money, and again, I'm asking the county commissioners to join with all other ninety-nine North Carolina counties and demand that the money that we pay in taxes be spent on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Tandy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for allowing me to come up here. My name's Tandy Dunn. I'm a resident of Beaufort County, and I'm not here to talk about anything bad in government today. I'm here to talk about an opportunity. The opportunity was discussed at the last meeting, and that was the grant from the railroad, North Carolina Railroad. One of the things I want to clear up about, what I looked in and found, was we're not talking about a pad built beside the train tracks. That's not feasible. The Norfolk Southern train goes by that all the time, so they're not going to build a pad and leave a train car sitting there. My company has train service at four of our locations. There is a siding, a little spur that comes off, and the train cars are pulled off the spurs and left for us to load and unload as we need to. Norfolk Southern services that area where the industrial park is, Norfolk Southern has actually already put out a proposal for buildings to be built there, and it includes at least six different sidings. So this grant would, and I talked to Ms. Squires about it, would be used in conjunction with somebody coming in. We've not asked for it in the past. It is a grant offered every year. So I know Pitt County got it last year for a facility in Aiden, so it's available all the time. So if we can get this grant, that's something that's great, it will allow us to bring some more industries in. We're always talking about not having enough businesses in Beaufort County. We need to get more businesses in so that our people can have better jobs in the end area. We want to have affordable housing. Affordable housing is backed by having better jobs because affordable housing nowadays is about $200,000 for a affordable house, which means the person has to make at least $60,000 a year. A school teacher does not make $60,000 a year, so they cannot afford the affordable housing now. So we need to look at grants that are available, the grant that is out there. If we can get it, I don't know how long we can hold on to it, but it would have to go in conjunction with getting somebody else into the industrial park. So I want to just kind of clear that up a little bit. It requires that water and sewer be run out there within a two-year timeframe. I know in the past, there were some issues, whether the city of Chacoinity could provide enough water and sewer, whether it would make their system overloaded, whether the city of Washington would have to come in and support their system also. So you need to look into it a little bit better, but if available, I think we need to take that grant and use it to try to encourage some other businesses to come into the area. I appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you. Juanita?
I am again here about DSS matters. I've been here for many months. This board, in my opinion, lacks leadership. It does not appreciate and it misuses the taxpayer dollars to fund DSS employees of this county that are breaking the law. It also is going to lead to more misuse of taxpayer dollars and increased taxes on Beaufort County citizens when the lawsuits begin to include Beaufort County, as there are now forty-two counties in lawsuits with DSS that has jumped last month's twenty-seven. I have for many months asked this board to investigate. I have told you that your employees were denying due process, parental and constitutional rights, and stealing and holding children illegally. Your budget, that each of you were aware of and agreed upon, says that you pay one-hundred-and-sixteen social service positions and this county's attorneys. You signed a contract with DSS and Department of Health and Human Services in June of this year. That contract also gave you the right to their protected and private information that would allow you to investigate, but still, you have done nothing, and I have come here since June. Commissioner, I feel you do not read your contracts, and you don't know what's in them. That, to me, is a misuse of your power and your job. Right now, as a citizen of America and especially North Carolina, I feel that our government doesn't care and it doesn't listen to we, the people. This past hurricane has devastated our western state. It is more the people taking care of each other than our government. It is the people's money. It is our taxpayer dollars that is funding hurricane relief. So tell me how this board, right now, is any different when you are shrugging your duties to the citizens you serve. Mr. Booth, you said in August that these commissioners don't like to get their feet wet, sir. I disagree that you hold this position with the DSS board position, but I agree with that statement very much, and I would like you to get your feet wet, being you've said that. So it is a voting year, Beaufort County. You do have four seats available, and so here's what I'm going to leave you with. I want you to look it up on your own. CarolinaJournal.com, the audit for 2023 with the Department of Health and Human Services has posted their audit. Federal funds are missing from social services, millions, millions of dollars. NorthCarolinaHealthNews.org, federal lawsuit on DSS filed on September of 2024 by the Disability Rights of North Carolina for violation of U.S. Supreme Court Olmsted decision. CarolinaPublicPress.com, USA Today.com, News Observer. Another federal lawsuit on DSS that is filed by the North Carolina Disability Rights and North Carolina Conference of NAACP. Twenty-two plaintiffs right now, and that is for warehousing foster children in psych facilities.
Excuse me. Three minutes is up.
Okay. I will list all these websites on my Facebook, Juanita Houston.
Thank you. I'm looking in the room, and I don't see Senator Brinson or Representative Kidwell, so we'll move to the items for consent. Is there an item that needs to be pulled or discussed separately?
I'd like to pull items eight and nine just for informational purposes.
Okay, eight and nine.
Mr. Chairman, for the JCPC appointments, Ms. Bradley is no longer in the running for that. She's not going to be considered tonight.
Okay. Did everyone understand that? Okay. Anyone else? I will entertain a motion to approve items for consent with the exception of number eight and number nine.
So move. Second.
And we have motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you. Okay, we're down for items for decision, soil and water.
Can we, you have to go ahead and deal with those two items?
Okay. All right. Anita, you want to handle the E-911 surcharge budget amendment?
Yes, and Director Van Norwix here also to field questions. How can we help you, Commissioner Richardson?
Well, you know, all I wanted to know is, I thought it says this is appropriated from the fund balance.
Yes, this is that special revenue fund where you pay the tax on your cell phone, and it goes to the state in that E-911 surcharge fund. So these are no general fund dollars. It's that special restricted money that we have to spend in a certain manner.
Yeah, well, when this says appropriated from the fund balance, I'm wondering which fund balance, but it's from the E-911 fund balance.
Yeah, next time I'll do a better job of clarifying.
Because I thought that we have a surplus in that fund. Do you know about how much surplus is in that fund?
I think the last time I checked, it was about $250,000, but we've been trying to spin that down because the state's going to reduce our distribution if we don't spend some of our fund balance down.
Okay. That's the only question I have on this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the budget amendment.
So move.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the budget amendment for 911, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, the next one is the Washington High School athletic improvements. Brian, you want to address that?
So this is an appropriation that was put through in the State of North Carolina 2023 Appropriation Act. I believe Representative Kidwell was instrumental in doing that. It's a $600,000 directed grant to Washington High School. Those funds are required to flow through the county to the school system. They are not our funds, but they are designated for the school system, and the purpose of the grant specifically is in the quotes, "for capital improvements or equipment for Washington High School athletic facilities." Attached in that agenda item, you have the scope of work that was provided by Washington High School, and then we have an ordinance that allows those funds to flow through us to the county school system. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, the question I have is, a couple of questions. Is the school system going to put any money with this, or are they just going to use this money, far as you know?
So as far as I know, based on their budget, they're showing that they're not. Now, they would obviously be responsible for any overruns or anything they wanted to add to it because it's only $600,000.
Okay. The only other question is, where is this money going to be spent in the school system?
It is specifically for Washington High School athletic facilities.
Yeah, because the, one of the documents, Appendix A, is signed by, it looks like, the coach at Chacoinity.
He may be a coach there as well, but he's, my understanding is, one of the coaches at Washington High School.
Okay, so the money is going to be spent at Washington High School, apparently on the piece of land that the county bought for a soccer field?
So my understanding from the attachment they made is they're looking for a soccer facility and then an athletic building. So I'm really not sure, except for the description that they're providing. I would assume the soccer facility would be.
Yeah, on that campus, because the soccer, land that was bought for the soccer facility adjoins the school property. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, John?
Brian, do you have any idea what this athletic building is supposed to be? And the reason I ask that is that it says it's, what, 7,500 square feet, which comes out to $30 a square foot, and the other one comes out to $135 a square foot.
Yeah, so I got that question earlier, and I really don't know. I mean, I'm not sure exactly. They have what they've laid out. I'm sure that once they get a design put in place, they'll get a better feel for what that square footage cost would be, but I don't know that anybody can tell you right now what that cost is. I do know that in the description, they show that it's a seventy-five, approximately 7,500 square-foot athletic building to be used by a variety of sports, including wrestling, cheer, and volleyball. And my understanding of that is concession equip, I mean, I'm sorry, wrestling mats, lockers, things like that, is what they have listed in the goods section under that athletic building. I'm guessing it's more of a storage facility, maybe. I don't know the ins and outs, except for what they detailed in their report back to the state.
If you go back, Representative Kidwell told me originally, and I can't remember when this was actually approved, it was for the soccer program, and I'm assuming this coach thinks there's going to be some excess funds to do something else with, but based on the numbers that I asked you about this afternoon, they've not designed anything, but I think all of it's going to end up going on the soccer.
I don't know. I mean, they haven't listed out. This is what's going to be submitted back to the Office of State Budget Management, and they've said that these are the outputs from that. So the scope of work includes a soccer facility that they've detailed at roughly 1,800 square foot, and then an athletic building that they detailed out at approximately 7,500 square foot. So the state's going to hold them to that under the scope of work unless they come back and request that it be changed. But this is what they submitted, and we, like I say, we are simply a pass-through on these funds. The funds are not our funds. They are, they have to flow through us to get to the school system.
Any other questions? Need a motion to approve the project ordinance? Got a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second that. All those in favor of the project ordinance for the Washington High School, where we passed in $600,000 from the state of North Carolina through to the athletic at Washington High School. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Everybody, let's see that. Okay. Yes, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, Nathaniel, we're, I'm sorry that you had to get up and sit down. This time, we'll let you come all the way up.
Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Beaufort Soil and Water Conservation District published a request for proposals for a Phase III strat project on August 29th, 2024. Six bids were received. The bids are open on September 9th, 2024. The bid tabulation spreadsheet is attached. On September 16th, 2024, the District's Board of Supervisors reviewed the bid tabulation sheet, spreadsheet. They selected J&amp;J Environmental, the lowest responsible bidder, for completion of the district's Phase III strat project with a bid of $63,772. The Beaufort Soil and Water Conservation District's Board of Supervisors recommend that the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners support their selection of J&amp;J Environmental as a contractor to complete their Phase III strat project and approve requisition 00000278-00 for a purchase order in the amount of $63,772 to retain the services of J&amp;J Environmental for the project.
Any questions of Nathaniel before we take a vote? Entertain a motion? Got a motion to approve? Is there a second, and a second? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the J&amp;J out of Edenton to do the clearing, raise your right hand.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
What is your assessment of the waterways in Bell Haven right now?
At this very moment?
Well, I know, yeah, they're underwater at this very moment, but your assessment of the drainage?
I mean, it's lacking. It's lacking. I mean, you go into the residential area, they haven't been scooped out, and it looks like everybody's doing their own scooping. There's some that are this deep, some are this deep.
And that's the city's responsibility.
I'm not sure whose responsibility that is. I can't say that. You just asked what my opinion was.
The problem is now, and we've got the mayor in the back of room, and I won't ask him right now, but when he comes up, if he wants to add to it, there's no place for the water to go, even if you scoop it out.
Below sea level.
Yeah. And the tide has been in, pushing it in for two weeks, Ricky?
Two days.
Yeah, for two weeks plus. And I've been around a long time, and I've never seen it do it that long, that long a period. Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. We're down to human resource personnel policy revision. Dolores?
Under the current personnel policy, employees who go on an approved leave of absence without pay must be on the payroll a minimum of one-half of the working days during the calendar month to have the county pay the employer's share of benefits for that month. However, under the current policy, terminated or separated employees have county-paid employer's share of benefits through the last day of the month in which they terminate. Staff recommends having the leave of absence without pay policy mirror that of the terminated or separated employee's policy so that the employer's share of benefits continue through the last day of the month for both. Submitter's recommendation that we revise the Beaufort County Personnel Policy Manual to have the county pay the employer's share of benefits for the month that an employee goes on an approved leave of absence without pay. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I have questions.
Okay.
This means that an employee can use vacation time, or he can work in order to get to the one day in the month. So if he works the first work day of the month, then he gets paid for the whole month.
No, sir, and this is. No, sir. In this, in this situation, these employees do not have any leave. They've been approved for leave without pay.
Right. But if he, if they work the first day of the month, they get their benefits paid for the whole month?
That part is correct, yes.
Okay, whereas an employee who is terminated gets his pay through the end of the month, regardless of what day that he's terminated?
Yes.
So if I could just clarify, I think what we realized with our current policy is that we were treating folks that intended to come back to work, they just weren't on a temporary leave without pay. We were treating them not as well as we were a terminated employee. Because a terminated employee could work one or two days at the first of the month, and our policy was to pay for their insurance until the last day of the month. However, the current policy for a current active employee that just happens to be on a leave without pay status, he had to work, or she had to work 15 days out of the month for us to pay for their insurance. And it just got really confusing in the Finance Department with tracking both of them because there were different rules for each, and we just felt like it would be a better policy if they mirrored each other. It would, administratively, it would be a lot easier for us. And then, like I said, we would be treating the current employee that just happens to be on a status of leave without pay the same as we would a terminated employee. We certainly want to treat them, we don't want to treat them poorer than we would a terminated employee that's going along their way and has no intention to come back with us.
Yeah, but I'm looking at this a little bit different. A terminated employee is involuntary. They don't know that they're going to be terminated.
No, not necessarily. This could be an employee that just quits work.
Separated.
Separated employee.
If an employee resigns, he gets his pay, he gets his benefits through the end of the month?
Yeah, and that's pretty much...
He can resign on the work one day and resign and get his benefits through the end.
And that is a, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dolores, that is the state health plan rule.
Absolutely.
So we realized what was happening is they, the terminated employees or employees that resigned were getting treated better by having their insurance paid through the end of the month than an employee that just ran out of leave but has every intention of coming back to work with us. It's just kind of a temporary situation.
Well, what if an employee on the 15th of the month realized that he was going to go on, well, he has no leave coming whatsoever, is what you're saying, vacation?
They've exhausted everything in vacation.
Sick pay or anything, they've exhausted everything. But if they work the first day of the month, they're going to get paid for the, get it paid for the whole month, even though they intend to come back. I don't know, I don't think I can support that.
And these are employees who haven't worked with the county for a year, so therefore they are not eligible for the Family Medical Leave Act. Employees that have worked a year, even if they had no sick leave or personal leave, we still, by statute, by the federal government, would have to pay their health insurance for 12 weeks.
Say that again, 12 weeks of health insurance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what do they do to qualify for 12 weeks of health insurance?
They have to be employed for 12 months, and they receive permanent status.
Okay, and then what happens? They resign?
Not typically.
Or they go on, or they go on leave, unpaid leave?
Usually, they're able to come back before that 12-week period if they're released by their physicians, and they come back to work.
You're talking about a sick pay situation?
Yes, and that's what most of these situations are, leave of absences for illnesses, surgeries, the birth of a child.
Well, what about if you wanted to take, go on safari in Africa for six weeks?
That's not...
Well, I mean, they're absent, they want to be, they want to be, they're not on the payroll.
That's not family medical leave.
So we're talking about medical situation. We're not, okay, medical situation makes it a little bit different. I can be a lot more compassionate in a medical situation, but if you're just talking about a situation where an employee, if he just works one day first of the month, and he says, "I need leave," he's going to get everything paid for the rest of the month. Unless he has a medical leave, that's not going to happen.
That's what, that's what typically all of these...
Oh, well, I'm glad we got into the medical part of it.
Or birth of a child, or something that falls under that category.
Motion to approve. Got a motion and a second. Did you have a question?
How often does this happen?
It's very, very rare. That's kind of why it's come to our attention now and that we needed to look at it.
It's very rare, and it causes all kinds of headaches over here. Yeah.
And it could cause us to lose the employee. It could be a good employee that, you know, we would hope would come back.
Any other question or discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the change in the employee policy, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right, thank you, Dolores. Okay, we're down to the Health Department. Janelle?
Good evening. How are y'all?
Good.
Good. I'll take it for a Monday, right? I'm coming before you tonight with three reclassifications, as you see before you. I'll be honest, I originally had planned, you know, two months ago when I was here, and we had the reclass denied. Was sticking to my plan of coming back once we had notification of possible funding and all that stuff. Unfortunately, the notification of funding was delayed due to some of the recipients being in the western part of the state. That was a Blue Cross Blue Shield North Carolina grant, so they have pushed that back, so I don't have notification of that yet. However, there has been some changes over the past two months since I was here. Whereas you can see before you that the Public Health Education Specialist, as of Monday, will be vacant, or excuse me, as of Friday, will be vacant. And that is one of the classifications that I'm here to request to become a public health educator, too. We've also had some retirements along the way, in addition to turnover. One of those being our public health nurse supervisor that we'd like to downgrade to a public health nurse three. The proposal before you, including the business officer, one to a two, would not be requesting any additional county dollars, but in fact have additional cost savings annually. So what's kind of encountered, in addition to the retirements and turnovers, is it has allowed us to kind of analyze our department's structure and needs because public health is ever-changing, primary care being a big one now, and the number of patients that we're seeing. But originally, prior to tonight, we had a DON, which is a Director of Nursing, and a supervisor, both of them in supervising positions. And it really did cause some communication issues for those public health nurses reporting to them, because we had providers that were reporting to our DON, and then our clinic reporting to our supervisor. And yet, our supervisor was doing the clinic schedule. And so due to retirement, we were able to really evaluate, and we would like to place one DON, so a head of our clinical department, that all other positions would report to. And this is really to improve communication throughput, as well as an improved incident command system. These that are before you have been approved by the Board of Health, and the classifications were submitted and approved by OSHR. And I'd be willing to answer any questions or concerns that you guys have in regards to these classifications. As you can see, the total savings would be $10,323 in salary and in benefits by these reclassification.
Commissioner Beeks?
Yes, sir.
You said you got the vacancy that was, that did get reclassified, that the person is leaving?
Unfortunately, yes, sir.
So now you reclassified, are they going to be hired back?
No, sir. I've already asked her, made sure.
Okay. Well, I don't, you know how I feel about reclassifications?
Yes, sir. And I understand, and I actually would love to dig into that deeper because there is difference in Health Department and DSS. But if, because I do understand where you've come from, and I heard you loud and clear at the last meeting as well, and ensuring that we're not selecting or handpicking or overlooking anybody. And the only way that I've found to even come close to being able to do that would be to submit every single classification department that I have to OSHR.
Thank you.
Motion to approve. Okay, we got a motion. Wait a minute, I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and we have a second now.
Thank you for doing the workaround, and the workaround you did saved us money. Thank you.
I appreciate y'all's patience with me, and I do appreciate the feedback that I've heard from you guys in regards to classifications. I know Health Department and DSS are special, but anytime that y'all have questions or concerns, I love to try to work those out.
Okay, again?
How many openings you got?
Right now, we actually are just filing for our family nurse practitioner, which is really hard to get right now with that high salary. We have all our other positions as of today fully filled, and they'll start within the next month.
Okay, so how long will they open?
Actually, very shortly. The family nurse practitioner's been the one that's opened the longest. You're looking about a month right now.
Okay. All those in favor of the reclassification of the three positions that Janelle has recommended, please raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, we're down to Public Works. Christina and Wes? Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, I'd like to give you an update on solid waste enforcement. This is a discussion that Commissioner Richardson requested. As a reminder, Section 52.200 of the Beaufort County Solid Waste Ordinance provides for enforcement of requirements contained within the ordinance. To date, staff has successfully resolved one case that was reported by a concerned citizen regarding accumulated waste at a residential property. This property owner was notified through proper channels, and the offending waste was removed. So that case was settled and resolved. To assist with enforcement actions, the fiscal year 2425 budget included funding for a new part-time employee to serve as the solid waste enforcement officer. This position is currently advertised, and it has been advertised since August the 16th, but to date, HR has not received any completed applications. When I spoke with Commissioner Richardson, that was the main point that he wanted to inquire about as far as what was the status of the enforcement officer and what was taking place due to that. So unfortunately, the position has been posted since the middle of August, and we have not received any hits on that. Just, it's a difficult position, requiring people to sometimes approach a subject that is not very friendly, a little confrontational. So it definitely takes a special person to do that. People, you know, generally, you think in terms of law enforcement. So we were hoping perhaps a retired law enforcement or something along those lines, but we just have not gotten any hits on that. So we're currently waiting. Again, it's been a month and a half, so we've done advertisements, we, you know, placed the notification in different locations, and we still just haven't hit on anything. Any questions?
Well, I just think this would be a good job for an environmental activist. That'd be a great place. They need a smattering of law enforcement to understand how things work and how to get along within the system. But, you know, if, we have a lot of people who want to go out and change the world environmentally. This is a great opportunity, folks, and you get paid for it, too.
Yes, sir. I would agree with that.
Have a question for you and Wes. If I have a complaint from a citizen, do I tell them to call Brian, Wes, you, or the sheriff's office?
No, sir. Call, call Wes. It's call the solid waste department. So if you go on the website under the solid waste section, it has a telephone number for questions or concerns for solid waste, and it will ring to Wes, and then if he's unable to pick up, it'll ring to me.
If, if the citizen says there's also some health issues involved, does that change the way it's looked at?
Yes, sir. It would change how it's looked at. So Wes would get that information, look at it, investigate it. If it becomes, if it appears to be a health issue, then he would contact the Beaufort County Health Department. The Board of Health is who determines and what, who classifies an actual health hazard. And if the waste question is something regarding littering on the highways and byways, then they can call Wes, but Wes is going to refer them to the sheriff's office because, again, law enforcement handles that, so...
So there's no action required?
I was just asking for, asked for an update. So the only thing that I will say is, again, we've, we've had the position posted. The position is something that needs to be filled. It was approved, the part-time position was approved at $17 an hour. When that was done, that was based off of an entry-level deputy salary, but then based upon the COLA and other increases, it kind of priced us out a little bit. So if we continue to have this vacancy open, I may bring it back to you, request an additional funding so that we can increase the hourly rate.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
And also, Wes wanted to make an announcement really fast.
Okay.
One quick blurb. I'm sorry it's not on the agenda, but I did want to announce that our Household Hazardous Waste Event is coming up October 19th. Hopefully, y'all have seen your signs out or Facebook postings. October 19th, 9 o'clock to 1 o'clock at South Side High School. We'll be taking the same materials we took at the last one at the community college. Just trying to increase some participation on the south side of the river. And we'd appreciate you all sharing those posts as you can. Probably will also be a press release coming out towards either the end of this week or first of next week. So be on the lookout for that.
I've seen them posted.
Yes, sir.
Still waiting for the call.
Okay, yes, sir.
Well, I don't know what they're talking about, but anyway, we're down to Emergency Services, 2023 Local Emergency Shelter Capacity Grant. Chris?
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. So I think we had two items on the agenda for tonight from our office. The first is the Preparedness Grant. So this was a grant that came to our attention several months ago. This is an EM grant that we pursued to just allow us to have some contingencies for emergency shelter operations within our county. And essentially, this grant had some guardrails on things that we could ask for. In the past, generators were included in this grant, but this, this go-around, they cut that. So we had to kind of be creative about some of the things that we would like to have. So that made us look at just alternate locations that we could use for spur-of-the-moment emergencies. Now, I'm not talking about hurricanes. I'm talking about tornadoes and things like that, that no planning opportunity at all, and we have to, we have to move someone right now. So tornadoes, train derailments, those types of things. And that's where we're really limited with places in our county that provides generated power, particularly on the south side. So that began an assessment process that we completed with Beaufort County Schools. We looked at Snowden Elementary. And what we found is it was wired in a way that we could install some transfer switches, some manual transfer switches, that would allow us to plug our generator that we currently have on the trailer at our office into that building and power either the gym or the cafeteria for those emergency situations. That grant request was funded 100% by EM, and the agreement we had with the school system is that we'll use the grant to buy all the materials, and they will take care of installing those materials on that school. We're before you today to ask your permission to accept that grant to do two transfer switches at Snowden Elementary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions or discussions, comments? Okay, all those in favor of the grant for the two manual switches at Snowden, raise your right hand. Thank you.
All right.
You want to, you want to go to the 2020 Flood and Mitigation Assistance Grant?
Sure will. So we've done our best to kind of put all of the information we've talked about over the past few months regarding mitigation support into one package. So what you have before you is the FMA totals. You also see the scoring summary from when we were looking for other firms to help us in support, mitigation support. And then attached to that on the back are pictures of the 10 homes that will be elevated under this particular project. So I'll try to sum up a very lengthy document as, as quick as I can. Over the next 12 to 14 months, we're going to have a total of 68 houses come down the pipes that are eligible for some type of mitigation work totaling about $16 million. And the administrative cost that, that a firm could collect for managing that on our behalf is about $1.17 million. So I would... So our recommendation is the same. We have a lot of work that's getting ready to come down the pipes for mitigation work, and it's our recommendation that we spread that workload out across some different firms. Now, again, as we have shared in previous meetings, we're tasked with giving recommendations. The ultimate decision is yours, and we'll support that to the best of our ability. But we are concerned that all of our eggs are in one basket when it comes to mitigation support. This week's disaster in the mountains is not going to help that. It's going to complicate it. And I'm just being very upfront. One of the things we're worried about is the availability of the state to push projects out and what they're getting ready to undertake in the mountains, and also an availability in contractors to do that work. That's been a struggle that North Carolina has faced in recent years, considering we're still working on Matthew projects because of contractor availability. So we are, we are concerned about putting all our eggs in one basket. That's our recommendation, and we'll be happy to support whatever decision you make, and I'll answer any question that I can on that behalf as to how we came to that decision.
Question.
Sure.
What are you hearing about the response by state of North Carolina in the mountains? I've heard mixed results, mixed reports.
Opinions are a dime a dozen on this, on this particular storm, and a couple of things. I am always very cautious to armchair quarterback an event from the position of hindsight. So there will be a time that we will have the opportunity to ask questions as to what happened in response and why things happened the way that did. I've been very cautious to ask those at the moment. Our focus right now needs to be helping people. So some of these things, I think, are, you know, what's the, what's the realistic expectation that we as citizens should have of our local, state, and federal government response? And I think a lot of that comes back to what we've talked about as a group before, the message that we send our citizens, is we're asking you to prepare for five to seven days. It used to be three. And as we've talked before, when you're talking about state response and federal response, that's a big wheel to get rolling, and the expectation that those agencies are going to be in place the very next day and return things to normal, in my humble opinion, is unrealistic. The other thing that's difficult about the mountain response right now is you're talking about some of the most rural, hard-to-get-to places in North Carolina under good conditions. And then when we have disasters like this that complicate it, we're only going to be able to move so fast. So I agree, there's a lot of opinions on social media right now. What, what I would encourage people to say is continue to help where you can help, and we'll have an opportunity to ask those questions when the dust settles. But I see a lot of focus being given to those questions right now and less focus given on the support of the people who need it.
What I'm hearing is of the private groups like Sperant and Spurse and some of the other many groups of people that are just joining in, just jumping in with both feet and both hands and getting everybody to come in with them are doing a fairly good job. And considering that, you know, North Carolina's the home to the largest military force in the nation, it's remarkable that they weren't asked to even join up and become part of the effort until today.
Yeah, I'm not sure on the specifics of who was asked and wasn't asked in the approval process of that. I don't have, I don't have vision on those requests, so I can't speak to that. What I can speak to is traditionally, and it's been the case with our disasters as well, we've been fortunate to have a very strong volunteer turnout of neighbors helping neighbors, and it's needed, in my opinion. And the reason why I say that is, just think of, think of the size of the office that we would have to have in Beaufort County to address a Florence without having to rely on outside resources or volunteers. I don't think there's a county government that can staff that right.
I think it's been true in all of our stuff that we've had here. Volunteers from outside the county have been here first and ahead of everybody else, handing out food, cooking meals, and doing things like that.
That's right.
Simply because a church group or a group like that, that's motivated, they can respond a lot quicker than the government. It's wrong to expect the government to do everything for you because of, number one, the government's not going to do everything for you.
And the volunteer piece, you know, as, as much as it is appreciated, it does have some challenges, right? Trying to coordinate those resources so you don't have a duplication of effort. And sometimes, that willingness to help a neighbor can put someone in a bad position if they're not trained to recognize the warning signs. So those are the, those are the vices of a volunteer piece, right? But as Commissioner Richardson had mentioned, it's critical for communities to utilize that when they can, and the western part of the state was fortunate to have some very good agencies who were good at providing that assistance to be in place. And so I applaud them for utilizing what resources came in their areas to the best that they could. We're talking about something that's unprecedented. In my opinion, this storm is going to be the top of a list in a lot of categories when we're talking about disaster response. And even, even the scope of it, you know, we're just looking at it as how it impacted the North Carolina mountains. This is a storm that reaped a path from the Gulf all the way into West Virginia and Tennessee. So we're talking about our state or federal response to something that big. It's not going to be perfect, and if we have the expectation that our federal response is going to rise to that and do it perfectly, we're overestimating our abilities, in my opinion.
Gentlemen, let's get back to the agenda item. I appreciate the questions and the comments. I will entertain a motion to approve the project as recommended by the staff.
Well, while you're getting to that motion now, we have, we have dealt with Mideast for as long as I've been here.
Yes.
And they have never failed us. I understand what he's talking about if you're going to have 60-something projects come up, but I really think we should start with the people who have served us most loyally, the closest, and that's the Mideast. We don't know at this point. This group may be taking a contract to go to the western part of the state. They may be the group that can't perform, but Mideast is here, and if they take any contracts, they're bound to take contracts within their service area. So we're a lot better off to award this contract to Mideast than we are to outsiders. Later on, if Mideast can't keep up, we can bring other people in to help us with this stuff. I make a motion to award the contract to Mideast.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Have we talked to Mideast, and have they given us a response?
Mideast is interested, but we have not seen their drafted contract. We were, this is all based on conversations tonight, so if you would like to entertain Mideast to pursue this, then we can engage in those conversations.
So we don't have a contract proposal from them, so we don't even know what they're going to be.
Well, we have other contracts with Mideast for similar work.
That's not the point. The point is, if we're going to prove, if we're going to make a motion to approve Mideast, we ought to know what they're going to charge.
They're limited in what they can charge. They can only charge a certain percentage of the contract, and that's what these people are charging here. Mideast is going to charge the same thing or less.
That's correct. So if, if I could make a recommendation, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we're bringing before you tonight the, our recommendation to go with Insight, and if that is not, if that is not at the approval of the Board, then that's what we need, no vote in toward. And if you would like us to engage in conversation with Mideast to see what those details are, then we would be happy to do that.
Yes.
It's just going to slow down the process. I think speed is of the essence, considering that hurricanes are coming at us from everywhere.
It's, it's going to slow it down, but the truth is, it's been a slow process all along, and whoever gets this is going to have to file for an extension over their first course of action.
Yes. Well, Jerry. I talked with the Director of the Mideast, and he explained to me that they didn't have a problem taking this job, and that if necessary, they would hire some people, but as far as the contract, I don't know anything about a, about a contract. I can only tell you the conversation that I had with them.
And that's where, that's where, again, I would say, and again, please forgive me if I'm, if I'm misstepping, but the, the motion to go with a, or to approve a contract with Mideast, we, we don't have that contract. If you would not like us to pursue Insight, that's the vote we need on tonight, and then we will turn our attention to Mideast and see what's on the table for the.
Well, let's talk about contracts. Go ahead, Ed.
The question, I was looking at some of the, I was looking at some of the projects that Chad lined up.
Sure.
Some of these projects been up, been up there for how long? Some of these houses?
Twenty years. I'm not quite following your.
The houses that you can really elevate, they just didn't jump up there today.
This is not.
They've been on the list for how long?
That's correct. They've been on the list for a while.
Years.
Exactly how long, I can't speak to that.
Some of them have been on for years.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what I was.
And, and just to be very transparent, some of these addresses have been applied for through multiple grant opportunities, so this may not be the only hat their name was thrown in over the years. That's a very good question.
Well, let's talk about the contract for a minute. The contract's going to be the same as the contract that's in the book. It's a standard-form contract for this kind of activity. You can take a pencil and line through the, the names in here and put in Mideast, and you've got the contract, because they're limited in what they can charge. Grant people will only let them charge a certain percentage of the amount of the contract for their administrative duties, so that's not going to change. There's, there's nothing to be negotiated here. I've spoken to the Director at Mideast, too, and he says that they will do the work if they get the contract, and it will be at the standard price that everybody else is going to be doing it for. It's a matter of selecting personalities here, and my personality is the one that I know the best, and that is the people who have served us well over the years. This particular company is an outgrowth of a company that gave contract, did work for the county 15 and 20 years ago, and they didn't do a very good job.
So if I, I could speak to one thing on the contract, and again, we have not seen a contract for Mideast for the, for the FMA projects, but we do have multiple contracts with Mideast, and as Commissioner Richardson was saying, a lot of this is cut and paste. There are some differences that we have seen in contracts in the past, and one of those is, at what point can either party exit out of the agreement? One of the things that we have seen in past contracts with Mideast is verbiage that says the Commission may also terminate the contract for any reason associated to its workloads, time constraints, and the likes. Whenever I see verbiage like that in a contract, that worries me from our standpoint. What that tells me is there's an exit door. When things get tight, someone can back away and leave us holding the bag. So when we're, again, going back to our question of reviewing contracts, these are the things that we would like to look at before we agree to accept a contract. So again, for tonight, we've asked for your, for your approval to move with Insight, and if that is not your choice, then we would like to engage conversations with Mideast based on your guidance that you would like for us to use then.
I, I, I don't think it's legal for us to just substitute the name without having a formal contract before the Commissioners, so if you want to withdraw your motion.
No, I'm not, because you're wrong. We can direct this contract go to Mideast tonight because they do business with us all the time, contract to be negotiated, the details, final details to be negotiated, but it's still, at the end of the day, when you hold these two contracts up, you're, you're going to have to look for the difference. And this thing has dragged on and dragged on and dragged on with one excuse after another to try to get it away from Mideast, who have been loyal to us over the years. My motion is going to stay on the floor. I'm not backing down.
So, Mr. Chairman, with the Board's pleasure, we would take that to move forward with negotiating contract with Mideast and finalize the details. If you, if the Board will give us that leeway, we will do that, if that's the desire of the Board.
Okay. Will the contract have to come back to us for final approval?
We can certainly bring it back to you. There's some time of the essence, but we certainly have to bring it back to you for a final copy, but if you want to tell us at Mideast who you want to go with, we'll start negotiating that contract.
Well, I think that's the motion. Okay. We've got a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chris. We're right at the break, Brian. If it's okay with you, we'll go ahead and take our break. Okay, we're back. We're back from our break, and the next item is the Property Transfer Resolution, the Budget Amendment for Agape Health Services. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. As you'll recall, at the last regular meeting, the Board authorized the transfer of property to Agape and approved appropriating $610,416 from the Healthcare Reserve Fund to support the renovation facility. You have an updated resolution in, the resolution in the packet was not complete. As I explained in the packet, we did not have the survey completed as of time of publication, so the resolution number 2024-10-7-001 has been updated to reflect that plat. You'll also note that the plat is attached. It is a preliminary plat. It has not been reviewed by the review officer yet. That will happen this week. You have attached email from the review officer that says the preliminary plat is fine. He has no issue with signing off on it. So I wanted to put that in front of you so, because time is of the essence to start moving on this project, so I want to go ahead and get all that in front of you, so that if the Board approves this, this information, we can go ahead and start moving. So there's also one more thing attached to this. You have the budget amendment that appropriates the funds, and then you also have a resolution, and that's on page 420 of your packet, that supports the Building Reuse Grant. This has come to our attention from the Department of Commerce that that is going to have to flow through us, so we're going to need to be the applicant, but obviously, Agape will be doing the heavy lifting on it, but we do need that resolution in support of it. So those three items we put forward for your approval. Thank you.
We need an individual motion, like a motion that all three of you.
Okay, which is the Property Transfer Resolution, Building Reuse Grant, and the Budget Amendment itself. So we got a motion by Ed and a second by Randy. Any questions of Brian? Okay, all those in favor of all three of these, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. We're down now to the budget proposal from Bellhaven, from the Mayor's office, and we've got Mayor Ricky Cradle here, so if you want to step forward. Just, just to let you know, in your packet or somewhere on here is a little brochure on the new 501(c) that.
30.
501(c). Three. That has been formed, and I guess it's called the Bellhaven Community After School Center. They had an open house yesterday, and Ricky happened to see my truck in town, so he called me on my cell phone and said, stop by. So I stopped in.
Yep and yow.
Right. I stopped in and got a sucker and spent about 30 minutes there and heard some of the things that you, you want to do. And as you well know, if I, if I say this wrong, you tell me. The Boys and Girls Club funded and operated it up until Friday. Was it Friday the last day? And you guys are taking over as of, as of today. So I think I've said enough, so I will let you go further with your discussion on it.
Thank you very much for taking the time to hear us out, and thank you for having us here. I will start off with Chantel Russell, which is our CEO, and the CUD overview of the program and her background and where we're headed with the program, then I'll speak to you more about the funding part of it.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chantel Russell, native of Beaufort County, Bellhaven, North Carolina. Born and raised, yes. Excited about what has happened over the past few weeks, facing the challenge, the community has come together, and instead of it becoming a crisis for the children, it has become a tremendous success. Today, we welcomed 20 children. I have wonderful pictures that will be posted on the Facebook page of the children running and playing outside, inside. They are so excited about the fact that they were able to continue to have a place to go after the decision to close Boys and Girls Club. I am an educator. I've taught for 27 years. After pandemic, things just weren't the same, so my background is education. During those 27 years, I also ran a successful program in Greensboro area. in Greensboro area where I purchased the home, converted the entire home into a childcare after-school facility, and, you know, hired people to run it through there. So I have the experience and background. We are going to be including the Division of Child Development application very soon so that we can become, you know, federal food program for the summer. We want to offer every child in the community, Bell Haven community, a place to go, a safe place where they will be able to go and help, have help with homework, be able to have recreational activities, be able to just know that there's a person in the community that they can trust. Boys and Girls Club served the community for a very long time. There were many changes, many faces throughout the years with the program, and that's to be expected with businesses, corporations. We're hometown. We're, we're homegrown. We know the backgrounds of most of the citizens there. We know the family histories. We, we know the circumstances that children face in the community. And so we came together to make sure that children will have a place. We want them to feel safe. We want them to not have to go home, you know, as a latchkey. I grew up as a latchkey. My mom worked in Beaufort County schools until, gracious. Yes, Ms. Russell, she worked in Beaufort County schools until maybe 2013 or something like that. And, you know, many times I would get bored being, we call them TK, teacher's kid, or just hanging around there with mama, and I'd ride the bus home. And, you know, we have places that we could go that were family neighbor. Things have changed over the years, as we all know, and here in the situations that were previously discussed about children within social service and different places, we want to make sure that children have a place that they can go. They don't have to go home and become victims of circumstance or whatever may happen at home. They have a trusted individual that will be able to serve them. I will provide tutoring services for children free of charge. I taught elementary school. I'm licensed in North Carolina, South Carolina, and Texas. I also have a certification in teaching children with dyslexia and special needs. I also have a certification of teaching children that are academically gifted. So I know both ends of the spectrum. I will provide those services for free. I want to provide tutoring services for children as they approach the EOG. I know the strategies and the techniques that are required to help students do better in school. I want to provide SAT prep for those attending college and just be a service to the community. There are many people that were there for me as I applied to college. There were scholarships that were available that helped me, and I came back home just in time, it seems, after thirty years, to provide those services to the community as well. So those are some of the things that we plan to do for the children. We will be open on teacher workdays. We will have summer camp as well. That's one thing that, feedback from the community. I sent out a survey of what would people like to see in the community as far as an after-school program. And they wanted a place that would be available on those days where the children were out and parents still have to work, and we have to have someone to take care of the children. So we will be there for those children, first day being October eighteenth, which is right around the corner. So, you know, those are the things that we plan to do. And I'm able to ask, answer any questions you all have about what we tend to do as programming. And also, if you would like more information, I can give you the email, and you can just email me. It is actually bcacenter@outlook.com. The acronym, yes, it should be on the flyer. And, you know, I will be willing to answer any questions you have.
Before we open it up, did you want to add anything now, Ricky?
Hey, you said a lot. No, I just want to, you know, I, I truly believe, you know, in God's timing. And she came back home at the perfect time. Because once she came home, we was talking, and me and wife had been talking about something like this for a while, and we was thinking down that line. And then when I got that phone call and like, I don't know how to tell you this, but we're not gonna be funding the program this year. And I'm like, the school, we're gonna start two weeks. And I was like, I understand that. I should have called you something. I know you're upset. I'm like, okay, but we asked where for the kids to go. And I was like, you know what? We'll figure it out. Well, my mission was from him, from them, you have to see how many kids you can get. And you get us at least twenty-five kids, we'll keep it open. We got thirty-two that weekend. I reached out to Shannon, my wife, we reached out to people. Thirty-two people signed up that weekend. You gave me a week. That was Friday. Tuesday, we can't do it. So that was time wasted, that we could have been getting things together. So fast forward, a parent got upset, called the news. Then they decided, well, we're gonna stay till October. And so that's how it ended up staying till Friday. And in the, in the meantime, which it worked out to our advantage a little bit, it gave us time to get things together. But at the same time, we still didn't want to disrupt their day because they still had classes going on. We still want to respect that time. And the thing was always, they would bring up funding. Well, you only had three part-time people. The town doing our part. We gave facility for free. We pay all the utilities. We was told in April that they were gonna have a summer program. The air condition was aged out. They keep doing bad. We spent thirty thousand dollars, placed all the air condition in the building, and then they said, well, we'll bus the kids to Washington. Thirty thousand dollars we spent, that could have been somewhere else, because, trust me, we got a lot of places we could spend that thirty thousand dollars. But we wanted to make sure that those kids was comfortable during the summer because they couldn't be in a hot building. And that, right, that should have been a writing on the wall for me, knowing that after you told us that, we did that, and then y'all decided to go take them to Washington. And then they came back, never said nothing, and then found out later that this decision was actually made in general. It wasn't August first when he gave me the call. So that's where we at, and so that's why we jumped in.
What are you asking from us? Definitely want to know. What are you asking from us?
I'm asking y'all that, um, I know they'll give funding to Beaufort County and the program, and they're not on the split. If, I mean, we are serving kids from not just Bell Haven. We have kids registered from Pantigal, Sidney Crossroads, Punggol area. I mean, so we're serving Bell Haven and Beaufort County kids, and we just ask for assistance. Whatever y'all can do, like we tell anybody that's been helping us, that's what we'll take. I mean, we ain't put no number on it. We'd like to have a certain amount, but whatever we can give. We'd like to have twenty thousand would be great.
I agree with you to be able to pay people. Right now, we're working on volunteers.
We're doing volunteers. So we're working, I mean, I work probably twelve hours a day. My wife works fifteen hours a day. She works full-time, but we're still making it work, you know, so.
The, the building is owned by the town.
The building is owned by the town. We pay all the utilities. We don't, we don't have no rent, none of that like that. That's, that's what we do.
Okay, before we, has anybody got any questions about where we're at with the change?
Just a question. What is, what are they talking about the summer program now? Is, is that still on the table about taking the kids in during the summer?
No, no. Everything will be done in Bell Haven.
Okay, so we're not gonna use Boys and Girls Club at all?
There's no longer Boys and Girls Club. There's Bell Haven Community After School Center.
You want, you want to tell the commissioners what happened to the sign that was in the building?
Um, it was a sign.
The sponsors.
We had a sponsor sign that had been there for years, and it was like local sponsors, they, whatever they gave, twenty thousand, five thousand, twenty, whatever. They took the sign down when it went from Boys and Girls Club of Pitt County to Boys and Girls Coastal Plain. They got rid of the sign, and then we don't know where the funding went. They had a van that was donated by a citizen to the Bell Haven unit. They took that away, and now they're saying that. They don't know where it said. That was the first thing we heard. Now, the latest we heard was, well, the way it was written, they gave it to the club. I said, but Mr. Gary Purse, I know him very well. He specifically bought it for Bell Haven from Lee Chevrolet. I remember it was purchased. I wasn't married then, but I remember transitioning because I was always being involved with the kids and going to the Boys and Girls Club. So we now we have a vehicle, but the school northeast has been great. The principal and the vice principal, they have worked it out to get the kids there until we able to get a vehicle to go pick them up in the after-schools. Because they were basing for the kids that were from Pantigal and other areas, they had to be picked up. But they got it worked out right now.
Even Northside has agreed to provide transportation. We have high schoolers that are registered now. That wasn't so just a few weeks ago.
I'm all for your kids. But what happened, I mean, there's something, the time that we were down there, the time that we called, the time that we met, you had seven, eight, nine, ten kids. Same thing to me, you're doing a pretty good job getting twenty-five and thirty. How long is that gonna maintain?
Can I speak from that?
Yeah, please.
All right. So, and I have to separate myself because of, you know, the position of my actual, you know, job. From what I observe, I was hired in June, and the reason why I came back home is because I was hired as the Beaufort County Education Director to work with the Boys and Girls Club for Bell Haven and Washington. Excited me because of the Bell Haven aspect, as well as Washington, but giving back, of course. As I went into the building, and as you know, there are obvious differences between Bell Haven and Washington, locations of the Boys and Girls Club. As I went in, there were improvements that, you know, I had on my mind, starting to list things that need to be done as far as building an education program and just the overall outlook. So again, with the survey that I put out and asking the children and the parents why the children stopped attending, they were bored. It, we heard the word very often from the parents and the community. It was institutionalized. The children went in to pure white walls. There were no decorations. It was, it wasn't child-friendly. They go in, they sit, and there were limited activities. They didn't have a lot of, you know, things that interest children of the twenty-first century. A lot of things were outdated. So the children just didn't want to go. And they'd ask their parents, I don't want to go anymore. And they lost a lot of teens during that point. And even the current unit director for Washington has said, you know, I lost a lot of teens because they just weren't interested. We've reached out with the survey. Everything that we have has been through the kindness and generosity of the citizens of Bell Haven, surrounding area, Beaufort County, social media. I have twenty thousand followers. There were people that were contacting me from Facebook saying, hey, I sent things. Amazon wishlist items coming in. Everything has been from donations and from our hard-earned money that we put in. But the children were so excited because they came into a fresh look. There were, you know, lots of games that they'd never had. We set up a complete recreation room. The gym, even though there weren't any structural changes, just having soccer bottles, like I said, the pitchers. They were outside playing soccer today. They had a basketball game on the inside. They had children playing with Legos in the recreation centers, children that were able to play with board games. Kids don't play board games no more. They're, they're, you know, using their thumbs a lot. But they're being introduced to something that is new and interesting and creative. We're, we're gonna have arts and crafts more often. So just different varieties. Parents are excited about someone in education being there, and I'm not the only one. We have a few volunteers that have degrees in early childhood and education, and they're also given their time as well. So that has been what has drawn, right now, twenty arrived today. We still have several others that are waiting to be assigned to a bus. Ms. Paula Sherman has four buses from northeast. There'll be a bus from Northside as well. So we're anticipating by the end of this week, with those that haven't been placed on buses yet, for there to be thirty children in the building by the end of this week.
And I, and I would say this, far as support for the Boys and Girls Club, we have done everything possible. We was invited to a be great lunch. And so me and wife, if it never had been done in Bell Haven, we got together, got the people together, we had one in Bell Haven. Me and the CEO had a great relationship, but I thought so anyway, that anytime he called me, I would be there. He was like, I need to meet the people, and we need to get funds and all that. I took them to the right people with the money in their pocket that so him specifically, give me your wishlist, and we'll make it happen. He never got back with it. So I did everything, came to support the Boys and Girls Club to keep them there because it was always finances, finances, finances.
I believe you. I, I believe you. What you're saying is true. Because I sent you some of the breakfasts that we've been to, and I, and I know you're not the one that was counseled because of something in Bell Haven. But let me tell you this, oh, man, you, you know me good. I'm like I am. Don't come out here with your head cut off and expect me to save you. When things go bad, call us. We can help you. Now, we gonna do all we can. I'm gonna do all we can because it's for the kids. But if we'd known this back, we could have made some adjustments and some amendments.
Yeah, and, and I understand that, and I know how budgets work, but when they hit us, we just, our focus was just, you know, and actually it hit me, and actually me and Brian happened to be in an executive committee meeting at the partnership. And after the meeting, I was like, Brian, so you hear about the Boys and Girls Club? He was like, do what? He hadn't even heard. So I actually were telling him something, and then this how, this how it came out.
Well, I serve on that, I serve on that board, and if you tell, yeah, and I was the last one heard it. I heard it in the street. I don't went to him directly.
I'll be honest, the workers that I know that I'm very close with, still close with, and they didn't want to get their seventh, they would let me know. They didn't find out till after school opened. That's when they sent the letter to the parents to tell the parents that they were no longer. You know, we the ones were there to get, to assure the parents that they would have somewhere to go.
Is, is there any other questions from commissioners?
I don't want.
Okay, Randy.
How, how set up is this building for feeding? I mean, is there a working kitchen or?
That's, we're working on that now, and we have reached out, already reached out to Vera and Anne over there, and they told us what we need to do. And once we get everything fully, all the paperwork and stuff done, then we'll have room, we had a room specifically for that, and they told us what we need far as sink, refrigerator, everything. So we got that area completely already covered. It used to have one years ago, and they kind of came in and took it out. So the area is still there.
Okay. Any, anyone else? Okay, I asked, I asked Brian if he would reach out to the Boys and Girls Club to see what was being done, served, the number being served here in Washington. And this is dated Monday, October the seventh. It says, our Washington club currently has forty-nine members registered, thirty-six attended last week with an average daily attendance of thirty. So I, I, I would thought with the size of Washington, those numbers would have been greater. So for the size of Bell Haven, if you have had twenty today, that's, that, that's very good. So I will entertain a motion that this is outside of the budget. I'm assuming nobody wants to go back and do anything to the budget that's already been approved. So the request would be outside of the existing budget for funds for the, the 501(c).
501(c).
Five, yeah.
Well, but here, I have a couple of problems with all of this.
Okay.
Number one, I, I have a problem with taking tax money from Aurora and giving it to Bell Haven. I think everybody else in the county is gonna come in and want the same thing that they've got when we do this. That's a problem. The second problem is, we've already paid the Boys and Girls Club for this service. So, you know, if you're talking about appropriating money and adding it to the budget this year for Bell Haven, you need to reduce the Boys and Girls Club budget by the same amount. You need to take their money. We've already paid them for it. They scammed us.
The, the, the money has not been spent yet. It's still on a.
Correct. We haven't transferred those funds yet, so they are available.
They are available. So we need, we need to, if you're gonna do this, whatever you, whatever you got, the only way I can vote for this is if the same amount of money is taken from the Boys and Girls Club account.
And that's what we're asking, whatever was allotted for Bell Haven, if it could be. Because this, it was an emergency. Two weeks before school started was the decision.
To, to my knowledge, and you guys correct me, have we ever seen an allocation between the two?
No, sir. We, we've never seen one, never asked for one, actually. We, we provide them forty thousand dollars a year, and that's in support of both clubs, or at the time, both clubs.
Mr. Manager, that, it, this, the program says, it didn't say, it said Boys and Girls Club of Beaufort County.
That's correct.
Yeah. And, and they are in Beaufort County. But it what, they didn't earmark. But it what, they didn't earmark Bellhaven, because it's just like he said, we had to do the same for Chalko Winnity.
No, but, yeah, we sat right here and said this is for Bellhaven and.
We said Boys and Girls Club.
No, we did not. I was here, I remember what was said.
You didn't vote for it, but look at the budget.
Uh, but, but you're on the board of the Boys and Girls Club, so you need to, you need to tell people, you're here advocating for the Boys and Girls Club to keep that money in Washington. And it's not fair for the county to have paid money, the way these people have been treated, the way they've been hoodooed, and, and to add money to the budget to look after these, this small number of children in Bellhaven. If you're, if you're gonna, if you're going to fund them, that, we've already paid the Boys and Girls Club for it. We're getting it back into fraud, and I found out you guys don't understand the definition of fraud, then we need to take the money from the Boys and Girls Club.
I don't have a problem.
And give it to them.
I do not have a problem.
Yes, yes.
Based on the 2030 mix, which was their average in 30, they said, and your sort of average in 20, that's about two-thirds, one-third. So I would suggest that we reduce the Boys and Girls Club budget by a third, that we're committed to them, and try, move that money over to Bellhaven.
I can support that.
I don't have a problem.
Now, we've got.
Now, do you also have a fundraising plan, campaign, to be able to get to the point where you're self-sufficient?
Yes, sir. Um, we had a lot of, some of our sponsors was out yesterday, and some of the people that we, that's fundraised, that can be our fundraising, are out west. They're helping out west. So we, we have been active in the community, and the community have been very supportive. I mean, it's, I can't ask for a better support. I mean, they didn't hesitate, nobody, everybody just stepped in.
Yes. I've asked this question before, I'm gonna ask this question of you and the board. Is there agreement between the board and the Bellhaven on this allocation of funds? I mean, a written agreement, contract, so to speak, where we can hold these, this group accountable? We're supposed to do this with every group.
Ricky, we don't have an agreement with the Boys and Girls Club either, do we, Brian?
They, they submit a request, and, and we have the standard paperwork that we have for all of our outside agencies where they submit.
Well, well, let me just say this, since I do probably more than the rest of you guys, maybe, maybe the exception. I do pay a, close attention to conflicts of interest. And this is considered a conflict of interest for us not to have an agreement where we can hold you guys accountable. It keeps, it's what we're asking, Hood used the analogy that we asked Bellhaven to pay for Bellhaven, I mean, Aurora to pay for Bellhaven. What we're really doing is asking all the citizens to take money that's non-governmentally based and give it to an entity that is a non-governmental entity, such as yourself. We become a granting authority. In order to do that, we need to be able to follow the money, and to follow the money, we need an agreement. That was what I was told, among many other things, when I sat in for my class on conflicts of interest, which I pay very close attention to and understand quite well, on all levels of conflict of interest, general statutes, whatever. I'm an authority. So, yeah, you guys are, I am. So I am, I am, I'm not, I can't vote for this. I would love to see you get the money, but if, if these guys aren't gonna do it the way it's supposed to be done, I can't vote for it.
Well, Shane, can I say something? You finished?
Yeah.
I understand, that, that these kids in Bellhaven deserve the same as up here. And, and these people have done a tremendous job. If they put this thing together in a week, I don't, I think what we need to do is go ahead on and reach out and try to help them as much as we can. Now, that's the way I feel.
I get this thing off the ground. I make a motion that we appropriate $13,300 to Bellhaven as for the Boys and Girls Club, that they file an appropriate agreement, whatever the manager wants that he's been getting, and that we reduce the Boys and Girls Club budget by the same amount and not pay them that this year.
I'll second that. Okay, we got a motion, a second. Brian?
So, Commissioner Richardson, will that be $13,334?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Mr. Manager, for a clarification, since I said on this, said on Boys and Girls Club Board, can I vote on this? This one, I'm not a member of this Board here. I should be, they?
I would like for you to, but I kind of think you shouldn't.
Well, I'm not, I'm not a Board member. I'm a, I'm a Boys and Girls Club Board, but I'm not a member of their Board.
I remember our Board does what he's saying.
Yeah. So I should be, I think I should be a.
Oh, you're actually reducing that.
So just, you recall, the, the statute says that if you serve, the latest statute that came out, not a couple of years ago, where we have to, where we have to excuse both Commissioner Booth and Commissioner Langley from voting on specific pieces of the budget, because they do serve as Board members of that organization. And the statute reads that you aren't supposed to vote on that. It's a conflict, and you would be violating the law. So we have, traditionally, we have pulled that out. So, and like the county attorney said, my suggestion to you would be, let's do it the same way, so that there's no issue.
All right. I will.
You're still good.
Do we need a motion to, do we need a motion for?
A second.
Okay, we need a motion to recuse Commissioner Booth from the vote.
I'm gonna do it Langley, too.
No, 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 no. That's, that's on a different matter. Okay, we got a motion, a second. All those in favor of recusing Commissioner Booth, raise your right hand. All right. So we got that off the table, and you thought your life was complicated, Ricky?
Honestly, trust me, I tell my Board it all the time.
Now, we still have a motion that's on the floor, and a second. Is there any more discussion before we take a vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand.
Opposed.
Those opposed.
You're opposed, okay.
Did you get that? Okay.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you very much.
And Brian, whatever you need from us, just let us know, we'll get it to you. I truly appreciate y'all's time, and thank you. And Ed, I promise you, I will call you. I got you, I got you. And look, and I do invite each and every one of you, if you're in a bad marriage, stop in, see the place. I mean, we still work in progress, but we have made a lot of progress. So, I appreciate it.
Thank, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we're down to item number two. Commissioner Richardson.
Which, which page are we on?
Uh, 424.
Okay. Oh, that's the LGBT+ Club.
Yes.
Okay. The Community College is allowing an LGBT+ Club, an LGBTQ+ Club to meet on campus. Now, let me explain where I am with this. We don't need to be using our educational institutions to send young people the wrong ideas and to give them the impression that what goes on within LGBTQ+ is moral, ethical, legal, or anything else. This, I do not have a problem with having all the clubs that you want to have, all the college students that you want to have on them, providing they meet off the campus. It is not a function of government to provide a venue or a place for activities of this type to be promoted. And that is my problem. My problem is the use, my problem is the use of government facilities to promote activities such as LGBTQ+ Clubs and the like. And the Community College Board of Governors should have been a lot smarter than to let something like this happen, and something like this go on there. It's bad enough that we have to deal with these things in the public schools on a subversive basis, if you will, because nobody will admit to it. But it is terrible that we send messages to young people, even as young as 21 and 22, 23 years old, those are young people, their minds haven't fully formed, that this kind of behavior is acceptable, whether you agree with it or you disagree with it. Do it off-campus. That is my problem. I, I propose a resolution that requests that Beaufort County Community College cease to allow this club to meet on-campus and tell them they can move their activities off-campus if they so desire. And that is, that is my purpose.
Commissioner Richardson, Dr. Loop sent me an email and said that he had a conflict and was, had plans to be in Tennessee, but he said he would be willing to come in November to address your concerns.
But I understood that the President of the Board was gonna be here. Is the President of the Board here?
Chairman of the Board? Chairman.
No, she'll be here.
Okay.
She's not here?
Yeah. The Chairman would, would also, said that she would be here.
I thought she was gonna be here this evening.
I, no, she said that she would be here with the, with Dr. Loop in November, if you wanted them to.
Oh, I want them to. I definitely want them to. This is, this is, this, this whole thing is, is, is of vast importance to the community at large, and I haven't talked to anyone that supports this kind of behavior or this activity.
If you, if you recall, in the last board material, we had the college policy as it related to the different clubs. I mean, how do you, how do you pick one out and say you cannot, you cannot meet on campus?
Believe it or not, it is very easy.
Do you believe?
They have a welding club, they have a math club, they have a French club. Whatever goes on with the clubs around the Community College is intended to support the teaching activities of the Community College. So my question to you, Dr. Loop, and the Chairman of the Board, what courses do you teach that goes to lesbian LGBTQ+ activities? Name those courses for me. If you're teaching it, name the courses. And the answer is, you're not supposed to be teaching the courses to begin with. So this stuff doesn't belong there to begin with.
Do you, do you believe in the Constitution? Do you believe in the First Amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But there's limits to freedom of speech. You can't yell "fire" in a crowded theater. You can't teach immoral and certainly illegal in some places activities using public property. I believe in Christianity, too, by the way. And Christianity teaches against this.
I, I'm also believe in Christianity, and I also believe in the Constitution.
So you support these activities?
I, you tell me, you tell me a way legally that we can pull somebody out and say you cannot meet on-campus. This is not about whether it's being taught.
What if, what if the Ku Klux Klan wanted to meet on-campus? Where would you be with that?
I mean, you tell me how we can stop it.
You know, what if the fascist party wanted to meet on-campus? Tell me how you can, tell me how, tell me, you're gonna support that. Now, look, this liberal idea that everything goes that you want to do, when you look at the law that comes from the Constitution, what you find out is there are limits on everything that the Constitution provides for you. And, and liberals have a tendency to say, "Oh, it's wide open, you do whatever you want to do." No, it's not.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? Did we get a second?
I'll second it, and I'd like to speak. Okay, I disagree with you, Frankie, about the Constitution. I don't think the Constitution provides that you can have free speech everywhere and anywhere. I think there are certain limits, as Hood said, to the, to the extent that, that free speech is warranted, that's the key. Free speech, and the Constitution gives people the right to assemble, it gives people the right to have grievance with our government, we've seen enough of that here tonight, and by God, they have the right to be that, to do that, and we should listen to them. The Constitution gives a right to a free press. Well, we don't have a fair press, but we, we have a free press. And we, we have, press can, can say just about anything, then people like myself can say what we want to say about them, and with our bully pulpit, and, and call, you know, a horse a horse, so to speak. But, you know, what Hood is doing, let me tell you where Hood is going about this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Hood. Hood is putting the onus back on the governmental agency and saying, "Okay, you represent the will of the people." You're, the, the money that he represents going to that agency, I mean, that, that group, the, the Community College, they have to use that money wisely and well. Now, Hood is saying, since I am this granting authority for the people of Beaufort County, and I represent these constituents, and he says he's spoken to a lot of constituents, and they don't believe in the LGBTQ being treated like the chess club, so to speak. Or maybe there should be a MAGA club out there. I mean, you know, everybody wear Trump hats. Yeah, I wonder how that would be received. Trust me, they're just wanting to make America great again. They're not talking about all the sexual activities that go along with LGBTQ, which is their right to do so. But Hood is saying, is this something that schools should be involved in that are publicly funded? Am I right, Hood? Is that, is that what you're doing? So Hood is putting this out in the public discourse. I don't think it's a freedom of speech issue. If people want to talk about LGD, LGBTQ issues in the hallways, and, at lunch, on the grounds, nobody's having a thought police situation going on, or calling it disinformation or misinformation. They can talk about all the LGBTQ+, IA, whatever, whatever else is involved. I'm, I'm not familiar with all of it, and I don't do pronouns either, I don't know how they all work. But, but I, I think if they want to do that, they have the right to do that. No one can preclude them or stop them. Now, if the, the college says, "We want to do this, we're heavily in favor of LGBTQ+ IA, whatever else they come up with," then I think they have the right to do that, and then we, as commissioners, have the right to either fund them or not fund them. I, I think it comes down to that. Am I, am I, am I understanding you right, Hood? So this is why I've seconded this, this amendment, I mean, this motion, because it is important for the public to know how we, as the funding source, or one of the funding sources for Community College, feel about these issues.
Any other comments by commissioners?
Well, you know, do, do, do either one of you gentlemen know exactly what they do in their club?
Well, it's LGBTQ+ IA.
That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean they do anything that, that pertains to that. It might, it might be about treatment, or what can they do to, to enhance the world and make the world a, a better place. You don't, you don't know.
Or LGBTQ+ oriented.
Now, now, I, I never interrupted you, so you, you don't know, but I can, I can, I can only tell you this. The Bible itself says, "By this all men will know that you are my disciples if you have love one for another. God is not a respecter of persons." So they are students at that school, just like anybody else is at that school. And one thing, I, I want to take you all the way back to the garden, and God gave everybody freewill. Freewill. That's, that's, that's the ability to say, "I agree or disagree." But when people, when we simply don't agree with someone else, we don't have the right to shut them down. We, we don't have the right to do that. And I, and I say, if you want to do something with this club, first find out what they're doing. Find out what they're doing. Find out if, if, they may be doing legitimate things that, that you would agree with, but right now, neither one of you know. So I say, do some research. Find out what it is they're doing. I mean, the thing about it is, you, you, no, see, I, I know what you think, you, you're just thinking about a whole lot of freaky stuff. That's all you thinking about. That's, that's what's in, that's what's in your mind. That's kind of freaky to me.
Gentlemen, 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 let Jerry finish. Let Jerry finish, and then I'll let other commissioners, before I come back, to Stan or Hood for a comment.
See, the, the thing about it is, if, if people don't agree with you guys, you, you have absolutely no tolerance for them, none whatsoever. And the thing about it is, how, if, if you want to win someone over to your, to your way of thinking, certainly the way that you want to conduct yourselves now will certainly not persuade any, anyone to, to change in, in any shape, form, or fashion. I mean, let's, let's just be, be reasonable about it. I mean, if you really, if you really want to do something with this, find out exactly what they're doing in the club. Find out what they, what, what their whole purpose is. Have you seen their, their organizational thing or anything? No, you're just looking at, you're just looking at the, the group, and you're saying, "No, this cannot happen." And that's not a commissioner's authority to do that. It's, it's not ours. It's, it's not our, not our authority to do that.
Okay, gentlemen, before we take a vote, Randy, do you have anything to say?
I really would like to hear from Dr. Loop. And I mean, I really wish we could've pushed it back to next month, and when he could come, and we got some, you know, questions that I would love to have answered, and I don't know where it would go from there, but I hate to think that I am basing my vote on what Commissioner Richardson and what Commissioner Death are just saying.
John?
I'm, I am of the, the religious belief anyways, that, as a Christian, that indeed some of these things are, are obviously against what the Bible teaches. But at the same time, the Bible also teaches that they're all children of God, and, and we are to love one another. I think that the Supreme Court's been pretty clear about this. The Supreme Court has said that this is a protected class, that it is the same, has the same rights as any other minority group in the, in the, in the nation, and that we cannot discriminate against them on that. The Republican Party uses, uses the college all the time for different events. So I suppose that we would have to ban them also. So you're not just talking about banning, you can't just ban a individual group without having to ban virtually everybody, every other group. Okay? That's just the way the law is, so. I, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Richardson, but I'm sorry that you're so smart, and the rest of us are so stupid.
I'm allowed.
Okay? You're not, your mic's not on.
Just, just listen.
You're using the Bible to justify sin.
I'm not using the Bible to justify sin or anything else. I'm just telling you where I come from. Okay?
Ed, do you have anything?
Well, I really wasn't gonna say anything, but I, I, as, as a black man, I know how it feel to be discriminated against. And this is nothing but a form of hate and discrimination. And I will not vote for Mr. Richardson's motion. And the only thing I wished I had, Mr. Richardson, and you can tell him this, they took, they cook a very good breakfast.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah. Could you eat with them?
I went to the LGBTQ that was sponsored by the National Association of County Commissioners several years ago, that was held, that was- Held in Washington DC. And I happened to be walking around, and I saw this poster. It wasn't on the agenda, they publish a little book about that thick with everything they're doing. It was a secret meeting. For only a few special people it was, because it was not advertised. And I got up at 5:30 in the morning, and I went down, and I sat in on an LGBT meeting to promote LGBT activities, because I'm your Commissioner. I was curious about what was going on that was not being, being told to the rest of the people. And it turned out that it was a secret meeting, and it was to promote those activities, and this was six or seven years ago. But let me get this over with as quickly as I can. Yes, I attended that meeting. And, but I'm not trying to keep these people from meeting. That's not the point. I'm not trying to, to control them. What I am saying is it's inappropriate to use public funds to hold LGBT meetings in public places and to promote it to young students who are in their formative years, because a lot of those people are gonna make some serious mistakes that they will regret the rest of their life. And for you phony Christians to sit up here and use the Bible to justify sin is an insult to me as a Christian, because obviously you haven't read the Bible, you use it to do whatever you want to do. And we know how that works with the Christian, with Christians. So if you're a Christian, prove you're a Christian by doing the right thing on this vote.
I will, Hood, I'll pray for you all night long.
Good, thank you.
Okay, one more, and then we're gonna take a vote.
All right, yeah, well, thank you, Jerry, I appreciate your, your Christian opinion, although I do remember the, the Old Testament, Deuteronomy, Leviticus, it pretty much specifies that some of these activities are abominations. And I know that Jesus came, and he was a Jew, and he, he blessed everyone, and he gives everybody redemption. But that's between Jesus, the Redeemer, and those people. We're not getting in between that. Hood made a position that public money probably should not be spent for this. We are living in a time where young people, one out of 10 people, young people do not really understand what their sex is. We are living in a time where fertility rates are half of what they used to be. We're living in a time where young men are not able to qualify for the military because they are in such poor condition. We're living in unprecedented times when America may be going down the tubes, the way of Rome, with the bathhouses and the, the games of gladiators. These are, are terrible times we're in right now. I recognize that, a lot of other people recognize that, and yes, a lot of those people are Christians, and I go to church with them. So, and, and a lot of people I talk to, maybe these are my constituents or the same as Hood's, but they agree that something is amiss in our society, in our nation. Now, Hood may be overzealous to some of you people who are jumping on this bandwagon of LGBTQ, IA plus, and whatever it is now, or shall be in the future. But as far as I can understand Hood, and the people that support Hood, and some of the people that support me, at some point, the, we as the public funding source have got to take positions on what we fund and what we don't fund. And I don't think that you can equate LGBTQ with the chess club, with the French club, or the travel to, across the, the world club, whatever they wanna do. I, I just, I, I think it's an advocacy club, more than it is anything else, and I don't know if that's what government should support, the advocacy of what is specified in the early books of the Old Testament as, as, as abominations.
Okay, okay. All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, well, then, the Economic Development Discussion, Commissioner, Commissioner Richardson.
So Sharon, if I may, Stan Dethrich has an item that I think should come before my items, so with permission, your permission, I'd like for him to present his item, and then I'll follow with mine if necessary.
Okay, if, if you guys want to do that, we're gonna go to the next item, the bid process for the jail food, and then we'll-
Okay.
Okay, so you wanna lead that off?
Uh, for the time being, let him go before me, and then we'll-
No, no, let's go ahead and go to the, to the jail food.
No, no, I don't disagree with that.
Okay, all right. You, you're, you're up. What, you, you've got it on the agenda.
For discussion.
Yes.
Well, what I'd like to know is, I've been seeing a lot of cross currents on jail food, and a lot of questions asked about jail food, and my understanding is jail food has been bid three or four times, and it keeps coming up for bids, so where are we in our contract on jail food?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So regarding the inmate meal services request for proposal, do have a typed up timeline of how that has all transpired. So back on June 7th, we did send out an RFP requesting proposals from service providers for inmate meals at the jails. We only received one bid. So the law is that you can't open the one bid, you have to resubmit it and rebid it to get more than one response. So we did that, and we sent that back out on July, I'm sorry, June the 10th, three days later, with a bid due date the second time around of August the 23rd. So we had a lot more interest the second time we put it out for rebid, and we had a couple of the vendors that expressed interest in actually visiting the facility so they could see the setup, and how the meals, you know, could be set up and, and prepared, or distributed, or whatever. So we had to actually extend the due date of those bids from August the 23rd to October the 1st to accommodate setting up appointments for those vendors to come in to the jail and look at the facility. So the ultimate due date for the bids were October the 1st. We did have the bid opening at 3 o'clock on October the 1st, and I believe we had five respondents.
We did.
We had five respondents. This was just last week, so we're in the process of vetting those bids and going through those.
Among the people that bid, the second go around, the, the, I think it's provided by a restaurant called Trump Restaurant?
Yes.
Did they miss the bid time or something? Okay, so they're not in there?
That's right. So it did come to our attention as we were reviewing and opening the bids on October 1st, that our current provider did not have a bid submitted, and she did reach out to our purchasing agent later that afternoon, and was upset because she had gotten mixed up with the day and thought the bid opening was the next day on October the 2nd. She did request that her bid be considered, and we told her that, you know, we're sorry that we would not be able to accept the late bid.
Well, what are the bids that you have? What are those five bids?
Who are they from, you mean?
What are the amounts to provide a meal?
Like I said, we just received the bids last week, we're not through vetting, those are going through those.
But you've opened them?
We have opened them.
Well, it's public information.
That's right. I don't have the bid tab with me.
Well, that's what I asked for, I asked the clerk for the-
You had those in your book. When you picked your book up, it was a big package.
Oh, is this the bids that, that, right here?
Yes, and if you give me a copy of it, I'll be glad to share the amount.
Well, I'll, I can share the amounts, because I can read. Um, let's see.
I mean, I think it's a little premature to talk about this evening.
No, it's not, it's public information when the bids are opened.
It, it absolutely is, but you're only looking at one piece of that, you're, you're looking at just the price and only the price. There were other requirements that were part of the proposal, they had to provide us with certain documentation, and we've not had an opportunity, there's, some of those bids are that big.
That's the minutia of the bid process.
I'm, I'm assuming that you're gonna do-
We plan to bring it back in November.
In November, like, wanna spreadsheet with the different bids.
Well, there's a problem with bringing it back in November. And the reason is, there are bids here from the Bronx and New York for like $27 a meal. There, there, I didn't see a single bid less than $8 for a meal, and that was from people in Greenville, and speaking in round numbers. Now, the-
There is somebody that bid $5 and something a meal.
Okay, there's, there's another lady that's, the company that's providing, now is providing it for, for like $3 and 1/4 a meal. I, I wanna ask this question. When you've got, already got somebody that's preparing food for the jail that economical, why are we out bidding this again?
So first of all, she has been the service provider for, I was told, decades, many, many, many years. More recently-
Uh, she's been, no, she's been in there for like 10 or 12 years, not decades. Yeah, she hasn't been in there that long.
Okay, 15 years.
Well, 2017, did you say? Yes, sir. Okay, that's five years, now that's six, seven years.
Um, who was in there previously, 'cause I came in 15.
That was the furthest, we had a record.
She's been there since before then, because she's been there ever since.
Well, the history on this is that we had, the Commissioners had trouble finding anybody that would provide meals. So we went to the hospital, and the hospital provided meals much more expensively than what she has provided them for, with a lot more calories, and what, and cause people laying around the jail getting fat. So what happened was the hospital raised their price to the point that we said, we're not gonna pay it. So we went out and found, I think, her at that point in time. And, and she provides a reasonable meal that meets the, meets all of the criteria according to the Health Department. They've had one problem, which is not a serious problem, that the state is perfectly willing to waive, and that is keeping the temperature up on the meals. You don't have to keep temperature up on sandwiches and stuff like that. So she's delivering this material, and to put the whole story out here, I saw her, because I see them when they deliver the meals, a lot, about half the time, 'cause I just happen to be outside when they bring it in. She said, what is going on with the bid and the rebid and the rebid on this stuff, and, and never come into a conclusion, and I said, I really don't know, and I thought, well, I'll just keep my mouth shut about it, until she called last week and said that she had missed the time to submit a bid. She's got a price that you're not gonna beat. I don't care what you're trying to do, so tell me what else you're trying to do in this process of jail food, because I'm not a fan of steak at jail.
So there have been service issues with the current provider.
What are those?
I, I don't know that we really want to get into that, right?
Oh, I want to get into that.
Well, she probably wouldn't want you to get into that.
I want, I want to get into that.
Okay.
It's public information, this is a public issue.
That we've had.
Now, you need to keep this in mind, I have went out there and looked at the food that she delivers, so this is not a matter of he said, she said. I have personally gone, when, when they bring the food and say, open your chest, I want to see your food, and I have opened, they have opened containers for me, and I have looked at the food.
I think the question was, what are some of the issues that you had?
Well, sometimes when food is, will come, some plates have more meat than others. The quantity of the meats, the quantity of how she served the tray, like I say, for instance, for the chicken, as she bring the chicken, some of them just got a small amount, and then some of them got larger amounts. We have talked to her about that many times. I have pictures on my phone that not too long ago, eggs in the tray, it looked like they took the eggs and put them in there with grease. Um, it's just a lot of stuff that been going on that we've been dealing with, where if, if, if it don't come, it, sometimes the food is cold, where, like we got ding before on the meals, so we talked to her, we tried to buy coolers and stuff to accommodate, to make the meals hot, you know, stay hot.
Mm-hmm.
But that's not happening because they in styrofoam tray. We have tried.
Have you documented these complaints?
We have.
In writing?
Yes.
Can I have copies of them?
I don't have them with me.
No, you can get them to me at my office, you can email them to me, I, I want them. The problem in all of this is, if, if you're buying a product that's at a, at a very economical price, you can afford to put up with some of this compared to what it's gonna cost you to go to the higher priced thing. And if, if, if she is not responding, then I will, I would like copies of that. Because the price that this woman provides this food for, I mean, she provides like 14,000 meals a month, and if you're talking about increasing that $2 a meal, it's not worth $28,000 to Beaufort County for somebody in the jail to say, he got more meat than I got.
But the thing is, sir, it, the thing is, when that happen in the jail setting.
I understand.
They almost had a riot one time.
Well, we should, you know, I, I, I want to know about these things because of the fact that she provides the food at an economical price, and you're not gonna get it anywhere else, any cheaper than what she does it. Now, quality control is a problem, we can talk to her about increasing her price so she can give you better quality control to solve this problem. But just going out and finding another vendor is not necessarily gonna solve this problem, because I know, I've been here 28 years, I know what we have been through before in trying to get food service for the jail.
I think at this point, this is where I'm at, and I certainly don't wanna speak for the sheriff, but I had an elected official, the sheriff, who came to the Finance Department because purchasing falls within finance. He said he was not satisfied with his current provider. He said he was not satisfied with his current provider of his meals at the jail. He wanted to issue an RFP. Now, you allot him as a board an operational budget of $3.5 million. I think he understands that the meals were probably gonna come in a little more expensive, but he has made the decision that he has...it is worth it to him probably to pay a little more than to deal with all the issues he's been dealing with with the current provider.
Well...
And I think it's within his authority to make that decision.
No, it's not. The commissioners make that decision.
Um, I'm not so sure about that. I think he gets to run the jail how he chooses.
We award contracts.
And he runs the jail.
So, he can go out and get all the prices he wants to, but if we don't approve it, it's not gonna go. And to that end, I make a motion that we stop the bid process, that we call this woman in and have a sit-down meeting with her and however many commissioners want to be there and the sheriff, and we get these issues resolved.
Well, Commissioner Richardson, at this point, we're in the middle of a bidding process that has been done to the T of the law. And I feel like you're trying to step in and undermine our bidding process that we're trying to go through here.
I am.
And for what reason?
I am.
What relationship do you have with this individual that you would not want the free market to work here?
I have seen this. It is because her prices are so much better than any that you're ever gonna get. You won't spend another $28,000 a month for food for the jail. That's $360,000 a year. Surely, as a public official, you can count.
I can definitely count.
Okay.
I'm an accountant. I have a finance degree.
Well, I'll tell you what I'm gonna do.
But I also know the law that the sheriff has an operational budget.
He has a big say in it, but the ultimate contract is approved by the commissioners.
Well, at this point...
Now, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion right now, stop this discussion, because it's just exactly what it was represented to me to begin with, and that is trying to get rid of this woman. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we stop...
It's not that we've tried to get rid of her. She had every opportunity to submit a bid, and she chose not to.
That we stop the bid process and that we...all bids are out for right now, and that we have a meeting with whoever you want to be there. I'll sit in the meeting with her, sheriff, anybody else you want there, and we see what we can do to resolve these issues simply because of her years of service and the fact that she provides this of a very timely basis and the fact that you're gonna have trouble with any other vendor you get, and I know that. I mean, you got bids in here from the Bronx for $28 for a meal.
It's not true. We got bids from providers that serve 20 other counties and 20 other jails and that do a great job, and that come with raving recommendations.
Okay, Brian sitting over there.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would say to the board, there is a legal process in which we go about procuring items. We have followed it to the law, as the finance officer said. And if this board votes to throw those out because of that, you have eviscerated the integrity of our bidding process. But you, as a board, have the option to do that. I would encourage you to take a vote on that.
Well, it's...every bid that I've ever seen, Mr. Manager, says that the county has the right to reject any and all bids for no reason, whenever they want to.
Yeah, and that's in this contract. That's in this RFP.
That's absolutely right. It's supposed to be in there.
Except that the fact that you said you want to do it because you would rather have a lower price and you'd like to have a conversation with the lady. So, you're essentially circumventing and just screwing up what the law says you have to do. I mean, you accuse us of breaking the law. This is exactly what you're doing.
Mr. Manager, that is what you said. None of what you said is true.
Absolutely it is.
Okay, none of what you said is true.
It is true.
I'm trying to save a vendor and trying to save the county about $30,000 a month in cost of the jail, and I don't see anybody else trying to do that.
But you're not listening to the sheriff who has tried to work through these issues and is unable to do that and said, "I need to go out with an RFP." That's the way it works.
He can do that all that he wants to.
And that's exactly what he did.
But the commissioners control the money for the people of this county.
Then vote to throw it out. Vote to throw out the bids.
We are...did you hear...let me say my motion again. Let's be sure what we're talking about. You're trying to put words in my mouth.
No, I'm not. You said that you wanted to stop the process and throw out the bids.
I want to reject all of the bids today.
And I advise the board...
And I want a meeting set up between whoever you want to sit down with this lady, and let's see if we can get these problems resolved. If we can't get them resolved, then we'll do what you want to do. I'm not sure you can't get them resolved.
I think the sheriff's been doing that for the last year.
Okay.
I would strongly...I would strong...I agree with the county manager. I strongly recommend that you do not reject all these bids, just for the reason he said and I said. It completely undermines our bidding process. I mean, we will be a laughingstock to all the vendors. And I mean, and why are we...why would you reject all the bids? Because you're a woman that you want to provide the service forgot to turn it in on time?
Uh, wait...well, let's wait just a minute. If you want to negotiate on what we're trying to do, we don't reject the bids. You keep the bids out there, and we still have the meeting with the lady and see what we can do about resolving this and give her a little bit of time to get her act together because of her pricing.
We've been doing that for years.
I'm sorry, but I disagree that it's been done.
We were doing that when Chief Rose was here.
I'm sorry, but I disagree.
Okay, okay. I...Jerry?
Hood, would you change your...I like the second.
You're out of order, Jerry.
Okay, excuse me.
Yeah, recognize Jerry.
Well, I think it would be terrible for us to set a precedent now as far as bids are concerned. So, my suggestion is this. Let them finish the bid process, and then we look at what's presented to us and then make an informed decision. I don't say circumvent what they're doing now. Let's allow the process to go through, because like I said, we're gonna find ourselves when there's a bid on something entirely different. We'll be going through this same stuff over and over again. Let's keep straightforward. Let's just do everything straightforward, and I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
I don't think...I'm not gonna second-guess y'all's work. But the thing...the problem that I have here is for six, eight months, I've been hearing about this bid process. And if...and I don't want to ask the question because I know the answer. The one bid that you got was probably hers. And I don't think...I...
It's been four months. It started June 7.
Yeah, well, I talked to...
Today's October 7th exactly.
Like I said, I don't...I'm not arguing with your process. I'm gonna...I agree with what you do. I agree with process. But what I'm saying is, to me, to me, it wasn't handled properly. If you...if you keep putting out bids, you put out...every time she turned one in, turned one in, from what I was told. Now, I'm just going by what I was told. She turned in one bid.
And we had to legally reject that bid. You cannot accept one. Did you have to have at least two?
I understand that. But did she get the letter like the other folks got that you're opening the bids back up? Did she get...
She was here personally that day.
Okay.
And then we also sent out an email and a notification and put it on the website.
That's my point.
John? I was here when that bid was open, okay? I was physically present when she was here, when that bid was open.
Well, it shouldn't have been...
The one bid, it was her bid.
Commissioner Rivers, it should not have been open.
It wasn't open, but it was rejected at that point. And she was...I mean, it was very clear what the deal was then. Okay? There was no...there was nothing. She understood it. She repeated back what the deal was.
Okay, let's back up a second, Jerry.
Wait just a second. We got two more. All right. Hood, back to you, Hood. Can you rephrase your motion to not destroy the bid process, but suspend it and bring her in and talk to her? Because this is a service, as many services are done for the county. Services are a subjective understanding of things, maybe objective. So, maybe objective every now and then, but a lot of times you guys aren't qualified to really understand the objectivity of the service. So, this is maybe a subjective thing. And let her see if she can become the person she would like to be and give us the better deal. I'm with Hood on the money. I mean, they're lucky to be fed down there, and they don't have to have a fabulous meal each and every time. But maybe she can improve things. It costs her more. She can do that. But this is a service. This is a service.
Okay.
And if you will change your bid to reflect that...
I'll address it when my time comes.
Okay, and I will second it at that point. Okay, Randy?
If I was bidding on something, I would love to hear the fact that somebody was brought in and given special treatment over above what I bid, and then, you know, that just doesn't sound right at all. And the other thing I want to ask, will you be vetting the information from the information that you gave us?
Yes.
So, if we go through and we understand all this stuff, we'll pretty much be up to snuff on the who has bid so far. Right, okay.
And you're coming back in November. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just need to clarify what Commissioner DeSantis said. This is not a service. This is a commodity we are purchasing, and it is the value of that commodity. It makes it in the formal bid range. So, it is not something that you can service-negotiate without bidding it.
The problem was the service, is what I understood.
It is a commodity that is being purchased.
All right. Okay, tacking on to what Jerry said, which I agree with what Jerry said, might help us move forward. I don't have a problem doing it at all, because he's right. Let it play out. But we still need to bring our vendor in. I want to sit in a meeting with our vendor and representative of the Sheriff's Department. I want to hear both sides of this. I want to hear all about it, and I want to hear what can be done by her to fix the problem.
At that bid, when she was the only one here, the sheriff, you were there too, weren't you?
Yes, sir.
They sat down with her right then.
We did.
For 15, 20 minutes and outlined all the issues.
But a lot of ti...
So, I'm just saying, it's not like she's not been...
No, we've met several.
A lot of times, sitting down and having people involved, she's come to us for assistance in this. Having the people involved that she has come to for assistance in this may help solve the problem. If it's a solvable problem, we're gonna save $30,000 a month. Minimum.
Those numbers are not accurate.
As Sheriff sat down, I spoke to her.
They're not your...they're your numbers.
Okay, okay. Okay, we've...
You want to readdress your motion?
Yeah, I'll change my motion to that we let the bid process play itself out, but that in the meantime, we set up a meeting that...
Make that a separate motion or whatever you want to do.
You wanted a separate motion?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
All right, okay. Well, let's vote on that motion.
I mean, I think it's very inappropriate to even talk about the bid process when it's supposed to come back in November. To me, the only motion we should have is whether you think it's fair and legal and above board to try to upset by bringing her in here after all the bids are finished.
No, no, you're going cross-country now.
Yes, it is.
You want to simplify this to what you said?
I mean, you just...
Vote on letting the bid process work itself out. Proceed with the bid process and let them give us our evaluation.
I mean, I don't...
I do not understand why Commissioner Richardson is advocating for a particular vendor so hard. That is alarming and sends up a red flag for me. I believe that...
Are you accusing me of being dishonest? Because let's get something straight.
You accuse me of that almost every meeting.
Let's get something straight right now. I'm advocating for Beaufort County $30,000 a month, and you're apparently not doing that. Okay.
What I'm telling you is, the sheriff has continually...not only the current sheriff, the previous sheriff has continually, over multiple years, tried to remedy the issues they were having with the current vendor. It is not working. I do not believe the sheriff has any interest in continuing to try to work with her, and that is why he came to me and asked me to assist him with putting out an RFP. She had every option, like every other vendor, to issue an RFP or to respond to the RFP. She missed the date, and you know, it's not surprising that she missed the date. I wasn't shocked at all, I must say. And then she immediately reached out to you by...I heard cell phone, so you know her well enough that she has your cell phone number, and all of a sudden, there's an issue with our bidding process, and you're trying to undermine our complete bidding process.
There is a problem with your bid process, and I am trying to undermine the process. I want $30,000 a month from Beaufort County's pocket, the taxpayers that I represent.
Well, undermining our bidding process is illegal, and I don't know why you're trying to do something illegal.
Now, I'm a commissioner. I can do this.
No, you can't do anything illegal.
Yes, I can do it.
Okay, okay, okay. Look, 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 look. Okay. If you've got a motion you want to make, you make it, and if we get a second, we'll vote on it.
I've made it 10 times, but I'll make it again.
Okay.
Okay, you asked for two parts now. I'm gonna make another motion after this one.
That's fine. That's fine, and I hope...
I move that we allow the bid process to work its way out and that we get a report at the November meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, all those...
I will second that.
All those in favor of that? I mean, the motion's been stated. Okay, all those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Okay?
Is Randy against it?
Yeah.
Okay, you need to vote that way.
Well, you didn't say opposed yet.
Okay, all those opposed. Okay, now your next motion.
I make a motion that we...that a group meet with this lady, including the Sheriff's Department, the Managers' Department, the bid people, the Finance Office, me, any other commissioners that want to be there, and sit down and see what we can do to resolve the issue to the benefit of Beaufort County.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we got a second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed?
Now, I want to point out to you, you need to be very careful legally because you have just voted to not try to resolve this problem, and this lady may have a lawsuit open for you.
Okay, I think that we have discussed this long enough. Thank you very much. I appreciate the job that you've done and appreciate the fact that you have followed policy and procedure to the T.
You did not speak for me, Mr. Chairman.
I didn't say...I did speak for you. I can say anything I want to in this public meeting.
There is Chairman. You should have said, "I speak for myself individually."
Well, you sure don't say it when you speak. When you speak, you don't do that.
I'm not the chairman. I'm speaking as Hood Richardson.
Okay, you're...
Who are you?
Okay, you want to go to your next item? You seem to be wound up tonight. There must be a campaign on that side.
I'm wound up every night.
So, why don't you go into the next one?
We asked for Mr. DeSantis to be moved ahead of me. That's why we went to this.
Okay, rezone him.
The industrial park south in Chalkawinity, 277 acres, there's problems. It is zoned light industrial. That needs to end immediately. We need to do whatever it takes in a very immediate manner to have it rezoned either to heavy industrial, which they do not have in Chalkawinity, which might be a great undertaking,[1661.16] or do what it takes to end all zoning on that piece of property. It was satellite zoned before we bought it in two thousand and six, by a vote of five to two. Two commissioners voted against it, and we argued vociferously that you don't want to, to zone a piece of property, and I'm not a big fan of satellite zoning anyway, especially when their ETJ didn't even reach that far at that time. So, but it did pass. There was a contingency on the board that allowed that to happen. Two thousand and eight, we bought the property. We've had economic developers work for us for some time, they get paid a lot of money. We spend a lot of money on economic development. When you own a piece of property and you allow other people to manage it for you, which we do, we allow the Economic Development Commission, I guess Committee 100 has something to do with it as well, I reckon. Certainly, we commissioners are kind of out of the loop. Ed, you're on the Economic Development Commission group, I guess you've, you've looked at the land, and you understand it, but we have that land zoned light industrial, two hundred and seventy-seven acres with a railway running beside it on Highway seventeen. It needs to be heavy industrial. If we cannot get heavy industrial, we get the zoning taken off immediately, whatever it takes. We are the largest government authority in this county. We do not kowtow to Chalkawinity. We do what we need to do to represent the people of Beaufort County, so that we can bring jobs into Beaufort County. Now, we have not had anybody come and use that piece of property yet. I kept wondering, what's the problem? What's the problem? What's the problem? What was zoned light industrial? That's the problem. And we should have known that as commissioners, that was the problem. Now, let's take care of the problem. We're the commissioners, let's do it. I make a motion that we first seek to remove all zoning. That might be the fastest and most logical method for us to make that piece of property viable as an entity to bring in jobs to Beaufort County. And if you guys don't want to do that, we'll go work through Chalkawinity. However, if we don't get something done, we don't need to be in the economic development business. We need to get out of it immediately, because we're not qualified.
Well, I can second that motion, but in seconding the motion, I want to add this information, that we've had that property for what, twelve or fifteen years?
We've had it since, we've had it for sixteen years.
Okay, and nobody has, has, we've had a lot of people that wanted to come here and use the property, and they've always been told no. And I've heard of one industry after another, one company after another, that wanted to go into the industrial park, and they were told no, they couldn't go in there. Well, Stan came to me, he's the one dug this up, and said, you know, there's something wrong at the industrial park south, that it can't be developed. And so we started talking about it. I worked on the City-County Planning Board, so I know a little bit about zoning, and how things work. So we started talking about where to look. Stan started looking, and what he found out is that the industrial park, we, we had a special legislation done, a session law, to, so that Chalkawinity could zone the industrial park when we bought it. I voted against it, because I remember arguing against it. And what we didn't know was, where we were taken was, Chalkawinity only has light industry. They do not have a heavy industry zone, even though there's heavy industry inside of the town of Chalkawinity, over there around where the plants were and the railroad tracks are and all that stuff. With the kind of zoning that we have on this, on the industrial park south right now, it's never going to be developed, unless you want, that you can have things out there like frame shops, automobile repairing, stuff like that. We've been wasting our time now for fifteen years on a piece of property, that if you built a railroad spur, a railroad spur usually implies heavy industry. I doubt if you could get a permit to build a railroad spur out there. So we need to take a look, as Stan has said, at what we can do to get this property so it can be developed. And one of the things was to get the self-session law repealed, and Chalkawinity zoning repealed, and it's not zoned at all. The commissioners have the say on how the property is used. You know, we have gas on the property, we have high tension, high voltage electricity on the property, we have railroad on the property, there is sewer to the property, and there's water to the property. You have everything that you need there, but you can have a frame shop on this two hundred and seventy acres. That kind of business, fellas, we need to look at this, because the public is being taken advantage of.
Brian?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, just a couple items. I'm glad Commissioner Richardson updated that, because there is no such thing as satellite zoning, so I appreciate Commissioner Richardson saying what he did.
I never said satellite zoning. Stan said satellite zoning.
Well, that's why I appreciate you explaining it to Commissioner DeTheris. So, February the sixth, February the sixth of oh six, there was a regular meeting by this board, and Commissioner DeTheris, I mean Commissioner Richardson, you're right, he and Commissioner DeTheris voted against it, but it was, it was a, in oh six, there was a request by this board to ask for a local bill that expanded the ETJ of the town of Chalkawinity. Session law two thousand and six fifty-one, House Bill twenty-five twenty-four, was passed by the General Assembly and ratified on the thirtieth day of June two thousand and six, which essentially extended the ETJ to include this piece of property. So, because it is in the ETJ, the general statutes of North Carolina say that the municipality is responsible for the zoning. There are options to suggest that zoning be changed. The heaviest industrial zoning that they have in, in the zoning is L1, which is light industrial, but the property, and I've got the zoning map here, it's managed by the Mideast, but the property that Commissioner DeTheris, Commissioner Richardson was referring to over off Dunbar, where the, where the railing, where the rail sightings are, is actually zoned L1, light industrial. I mean, there are some things that you could ask, maybe that they add to light industrial, but I think you get, I think you get a little better help from a municipality in asking them instead of insulting them, and to say why you would, but I mean, looking at the permitted uses within light industrial, apparel and clothing manufacturing, automobile, parts and accessories manufacturing, bakery and other establishments manufacturing, building materials, building machines manufacturing, dry cleaning, laundry plants, I mean, there are, if you look at the city of Washington, they have a heavy industrial typically in zoning, which of course, I know the board does not like zoning, I hear that, but, but zoning classifications are to try to allow for difference uses to be compatible, so that you don't have a concrete plant in the middle of a residential area. So, when you look at heavier industrial things, like concrete plants, things that make lots of light, lots of noise, those typically are in an I2 or a heavy industrial. You could seek that request from the town of Chalkawinity, it would be up to the process, there is a process within their zoning ordinance in which you could request that to be added to it. There is also the process by which if we were to have a client that we want to locate out there, we would say, can we not make a contingent upon getting a rezoning? Do it all the time. I would speak to Commissioner Richardson's comment, that we've had hundred, or how many industries that wanted to go out there, we've really not. There is a challenge that we have in, in getting businesses and industries to want to come to Beaufort County. And unfortunately, I think some of it has to do with some of the issues you've talked about tonight. When, when, businesses want to be in a place where they feel like things are going well, and they're heard, and there was a story that was told to me once, that there was, there was a person who, who was here for a business, turned on the TV, watched the ship, watched the, watched the county commissioners meeting, and said, "I'm not locating my business there." You got to be receptive to businesses, you got to show them that, that leadership is, is, is doing the right thing, and, and we need that help from the board.
I want, I would like to speak to this, is that's okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I've heard that story.
Do we have a motion, do we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, motion on the floor? Well, I'd like to make a motion.
You read it back.
Yeah, tell us what we're doing.
Motion was made to seek to remove all zoning and get special session law repealed.
All right, let me, let me address that for just a moment. We do need to use, as the manager said, a logical process in approaching this. And I, I agree with him that the first best step is to go to the town of Chalkawinity and say, "Guys, we need to do something about the zoning on this place, so we've got more flexibility in trying to attract the industry." Because if you give, if you give the copy of the permitted uses, and the L1 zone to a prospective client, right away, you've knocked out a lot of people. And it would be awfully nice to be able to give them a piece of paper that said, "Here's the zoning that's compatible for heavy industry," or anything else, or anybody that wanted to come here. So, I think it's wise to start with the town of Chalkawinity, because if you, if you look at leaping our head and trying to get the session law repealed, the first thing they're going to say is, if you try to deal with the town of Chalkawinity, so use the, use the step process, go to the town of Chalkawinity, and then let's see what happens.
Well, I, I've got to ask this question, Hood, you know about this more than I do. I mean, you, you've spent a lot of time before city councils and deal with that lower echelon of government, and you know how petty they can be. And this is what I'm trying to avoid, is the pettiness of, of another overlay government, when we've got a job to do, and we ain't getting it done. You know, notwithstanding somebody seeing something in, in a motel room say, "I'm not going to go there," because they argue too damn much.
I don't want that guy here, if his mind is that small to begin with.
Yeah, I don't want him here either. Now, I want to finish, I want to finish. Now, Hood, if you think that we should go in steps, how fast are we going to go in steps? Because dragging our feet is, is what we're good at around here.
Well, I think we should go to Chalkawinity before the next commissioners meeting, so we can move this thing along.
Okay, next commissioner, okay, I was told, I was told by Mideast, it could take sixty days, forty-five to sixty days, if they push it hard. Now, how difficult would it be to get them to change and bring in heavy industrial?
You don't know, you talk to them.
Okay, I, I, well, I would like, I would like to amend my motion to take out the part where we remove all zoning, and we ask Chalkawinity to, to enact heavy industrial, however it can be enacted.
Why don't you just say, "To assist us in changing the zoning to the point that we can attract heavy industry."
Heavy industry, there we go. I like that. I'll go with that.
Okay?
I've got a question.
Yes. I mean, get-
Hood, Mr. Manager, I've got a question, and you've done this before, and probably Hood's done it before, but doesn't the town of Chalkawinity have a board of adjustment?
They do.
Is it possible that if we get a company that wants to come here heavy equipment, that they could go in front of the board of adjustment, and take about thirty to sixty days?
I, I wouldn't want to quote timeframes on it, because, I mean, there, there are some opportunities to request a rezoning. You, you see that before, recently, the city of Washington did that, had a developer come in and say, "I'm going to buy this piece of property contingent on it being rezoned." I would tell you that we internally have had the conversation about light industrial, and whether it needed to be adjusted. We just haven't run into an issue where it's been a problem yet. But, I mean, there could be. The challenge that you run into is, when you start talking about the things that heavy industrial bring in, and I hear what you're saying, it does butt up to some residential areas, there's going to be, there is going to be some outcry from folks who say, "I don't want..." I mean, when you think about heavy industry, you think about kind of the worst of the worst, right? Concrete plants, things that go bump all night long, make a lot of noise, make a lot of light pollution, you, you probably will get some pushback on that, and, and that's understandable. But it's certainly something that the board can ask the town of Chalkawinity, their planning board, to take a look at, to, to ask if there are some additional categories that they can add maybe to L1, to their light industrial, or maybe they can actually have a, an I2 zoning, a heavy industrial.
That may be part, that may be- Excuse me, stutter. That may be part of the solution, so, I mean, you don't know, you talk to town of Chalkawinity and see what you can work out, but the problem is this, you don't get to the point of a company saying, "I want to come here if this is rezoned," because when they look at the schedule of uses for light industrial, chances are they're going to go somewhere else. You're trying to attract them and show them that, hey, this thing's ready to go, if you want to come, let's, you know, you're, you're in the ballpark. I, I think a lot of companies may have looked at this and seen that light industry and the list of permitted uses and that sort of thing, and said, "Well, we need to move on," because they're not interested in something like us.
So, the other thing I would say to you, I mean, notwithstanding Commissioner DeTheris' comment about the lower echelon of government, municipalities are units of local government, just like counties are units of local government. And what the board has got to remember is, it's within their jurisdiction. The only authority you have as a board of commissioners is in unincorporated Beaufort County. Now, we do have some areas that have adopted some of your ordinances, but the law is really clear. You don't have any right to go into a municipality and do things that the municipality doesn't say you can do. That's just the way the law is.
That's right. Okay, we got, got a motion on the floor, is there any further discussion?
I just want to speak to one thing.
Oh, please.
Thank you, you're welcome. Yeah, you're going before a board of adjustments and getting things maybe done, and you've got somebody coming to your area that's between you and somebody else, and they like this area. I mean, they're, they're not worried about the arguing they might see on TV, they want to bring jobs, a lot of jobs, and they see that you're not paying attention, and you're not on top of what you need to be on top of. You should have already had this changed some time ago. And, and then they decide, maybe these aren't the guys we need to go to, because they're not together enough to be able to accept a big group like we are, and we're going to do heavy industrial, we're going to create lots of jobs, hundreds, thousands of jobs. We got this other place, they're cheap, they want us, they're giving us dog and pony show. They want us bad. We want to come here, because maybe we have ties in this area, maybe we want to be in North Carolina. And you, they decide, no, I'm not getting the help I need, I, I, we got light industrial, this is not the right area for us, maybe they're going to put up a lot of obstacles to us being able to use the property, I'm going to go to this other area and give them our jobs. Now, it's not only that Beaufort County would be losing these jobs, the state of North Carolina would be losing these jobs. Now, the state of North Carolina is very proud of every two, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred jobs they, they bring in. You lose three thousand jobs at one whack, they're not happy about that.
Right, right.
So, so what I'm trying to say is, we need to do all we can do right now. The motion that Hood suggested that we use is the one, I think, that would be best. Hood, you're going to second that motion, since you helped make it.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's, that's what we need to do. We don't need to dilly-dally with the Chalkawinity, we need to work with them, but we don't need to be the idiots in this. We need, for them-
Man.
Yeah, we don't, we need to be smart. We need to be smart.
You, you've got a motion and a second on the floor, and it's probably going to be voted on with a unanimous vote.
You know the name?
Huh?
Know the name.
It's not, okay.
Okay, good. We spinning wheels now.
And we, we, we still, if I understand it correctly, we're still talking about going to the town of Chalkawinity and ask them to consider changing the zoning, okay? All right.
So that we can, we can attract heavy industry.
Okay, all, okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay. Wow, 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 wow. I guess you want to talk about corruption one more time?
Yeah, I do, I do, because, last time we met, you know, I talked about the fake media, the Democratic Socialists propaganda.
Is this a political speech?
Yes, it is, it's a political topic.
It's very, is that not a conflict of interest?
It would be for you, if you don't understand conflict of interest.
No, I think you've, you've been to these meetings on conflicts, and I think you're, I think you-
You didn't get that?
I don't think you've got that part.
Okay, now, explain to me how it is a conflict of interest.
Well, you, go back to your notes, go back to your notes.
No, you, you, I know my notes.
Yeah, go back to your notes.
How is this, how is this a conflict?
Go ahead.
Your position is that I should not talk about what's happening in America today, I should not use this bully pulpit. We elect people, we, we have a media that is foul and corrupt.
Tell me, tell me what, tell me, go ahead and tell me what-
We're losing viewers like crazy, so get it over with.
Yeah, yeah.
Then that's what you guys like, you want, is to lose viewers.
Yeah.
Right.
Go ahead.
Well, notwithstanding your misunderstanding of conflict of interest, this is not a conflict of interest. This is body politic of North Carolina, we elect people in, in this state. We hold the elections. A lot of people think the elections are rigged across the nation. Some people even think the elections are rigged in North Carolina. I don't hold that opinion. I think we probably do better in North Carolina than most places. We have some counties don't do well. I like to think Beaufort County did a good job.
Absolutely.
But when you have a corrupt media, as we have in this nation, and I know you feel that the media is, is great, you like, you like the way things go, but we witnessed, after the last session I had, when I discuss something, it is entirely obvious, at least to my constituents, that the media is corrupt, it is foul. They had two, we had two debates, both of them, the moderators were in the camp for, for the Democratic Socialists, both times. Poor Trump is not a debater.
Why don't you look at the camera?
That's all, I'm going to look at you, since you're the one that has a misunderstanding about how we do and what we talk about, and what is the essence of what we, Commissioner- I want to excuse myself, I need to go to the little boy's ring. Little boy's got to go to the little boy's ring.
I'll be able to turn my foot, this might help. Everything I just said didn't count, because this was not in. Should I restate it again?
No, no.
No, I won't do that. But, but, but what we have in America is wrong. It is wrong, and I see it, I know Hood sees it. Some of you other guys don't see it, and you guys have a fine coalition, you work together, you power share, you do things together as a group, as a unit, a viable unit.
Don't you and Hood do that?
Yes, we do. We do, and we represent our constituents, who understand and know that we have a problem And we represent our constituents who understand and know that we have a problem in this nation right now.
What I'm telling you is that people working together as a group isn't wrong.
It depends on what group you're working with. Yes.
By your opinion.
My opinion counts. I, I am elected to have my opinion and I'm going to have my opinion.
No, we aren't.
Well, good, good. Within your coalition group of power sharing, good, I got that. Well, you know, suffice it to say, no, 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 no.
Oh, you're the chairman.
That's right.
Are you chairman? Shall I proceed?
Please, please.
Sir, you're chairman. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I am concerned, well, I speak to it, and I, and I am concerned that the public is not getting the right information. And if I can shout the alarm one more time, I'm going to do it. People are frustrated. You think January 6th was bad? January 6th might have been a necessity, we're finding out. The next January 6th is going to be much, much, much worse. We talk about election deniers, the election deniers. When did the Democratic Socialists ever not deny an election? They've done it every election since 2000. They, they called President Trump the illegitimate president. Went on and on and on. That's all he heard, Russia, Russia, Russia. We had to go through all of that as a nation. And we did it because the corrupt media promoted it. Now, corrupt media is letting this empty pet suit of a candidate escape any scrutiny whatsoever. While President Trump and J.D. Vance, his vice presidential candidate, is being scrutinized to the hilt and getting negative media at the rate of about 80 percent. We're the preferred candidate by the Democratic Socialist propagandistic media is getting scrutinized and negative media ranges at about 10 percent. Those numbers are crazy, especially when the lies are prolific. Stuff like 2025, Project 2025. No, they don't even know what Project 2025 is and yet they make an issue of it. It's like abortion. I mean, I mean, you're a preacher. Abortion's a big deal for the Democratic Socialist Party. It's huge. It's a big issue. You, you came back too soon, I'm just getting warmed up.
No, 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 you're, you're finished. You're finished.
Can I say something? Listen, I...
At least I listened to comment, good.
I, I want to, I want to say this. I mean, I understand what, what Stan is saying. I understand his passion for what he's saying, but basically, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, that has nothing to do with the business of the county.